Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Anthony Coghill, City Council Representative for the 4th District, and we are reconvening a meeting that started yesterday with the -- I'm the Chair of Parks and Recreation Committee, and I have with us our Budget Director, Mr. Bill Urbannick, and he will start with a brief overview. Do we want to call the Director and Luann to the table now? If you would please come up and just, you know, give your name, and you all know the routine.
Good afternoon, everyone. Hi, I'm Luann Haran. I'm the Assistant Director of the Senior Program for Parks and Recreation. Thanks for having us today.
Hello, everybody. And Councilman, my name is Catherine Vargas. I'm the Assistant Director of Community Recreation.
Good afternoon. Glad to be here. Thanks, Councilman. Ross Chapman, Director of Parks and Recreation.
The mission of the Department of Parks and Recreation is to seek and enrich and enhance the lives of City of Pittsburgh residents by fostering lifelong learning through programs, social connections, healthy active living, and culturally diverse recreational and educational opportunities within all the city parks and community recreation facilities. The budget for this year for the Department of Parks and Recreation, total budget, is $4,776,000. It's an increase of a little more than $10,000 or .2%. Total full-time positions are 46 and 1/2, plus $1.26 million for funding of part-time and seasonal employees, majority of which are lifeguards that come on in the summertime. Salary and position changes of note, there's reorganized operations and administration managers and finance administrator into two fiscal contracting coordinators. There's a net savings in those two positions through that coordination of $26,660. There's also reorganized two recreation supervisors and one program coordinator, three into three additional program supervisors. That's a net increase of $24,880. Parks and Recreation's non-salary subclasses were reduced by $120,000 or 17%. Largest change is driven by the cleaning contract, which is being moved to DPW operations. I think we had some discussion about that briefly today. That was $125,000 in 2019. It's increased to $185,000 per this morning's legislation. Additional minor changes include operational supplies, where there's an increase of $30,000. Office supplies decreased by $15,000. Repairs decreased by $14,000. Recreational services increased by $10,000. Printing and binding decreased by $2,500. Landscaping decreased by $2,000, and data processing decreased by $1,500. Parks has a handful of operating revenues, including swimming pools, which nets in about $363,000. That's a half a percent decrease from 2019. The summer foods program, $55,000, the same as prior years. Meeting room rentals, $23,262. That's an 88% increase from 2019. And the Regional Asset District Fund, Trust Fund salaries and benefit reimbursements of $84,600, a 4% increase from 2019. Parks and Recreation has no capital budget. Used to, the Department of Public Works is the responsible department for maintenance and reconstruction of all city parks, ballfields, recreation, and senior centers and pools and spray parks. All parks-related capital budget items will be discussed during DPW's budget hearing Thursday, December 5th, so if you're interested, please tune in. Parks has several trust funds. One is the Regional Asset District Trust Fund. The projected beginning balance in that trust fund is to be $344,000. Anticipated revenue over 2020 is $1,237,000. There's no position changes of note. Park Ranger was previously budgeted solely to Melon Park Trust Fund. It's now split between the Melon and the A-Rad Trust Fund, but it's not an additional Ranger. Staffing is now 5.6 full-time, plus funds for part-time and seasonal. Melon Park Tennis Trust Fund, beginning project balance was $2.1 million, is projected to be $2.1 million. Anticipated 2020 revenue, $390,000. There's no position changes of note. Staffing from a budgetary basis reduced by 2.9 full-time, plus part-time. Senior Citizen Program Trust Fund, beginning balance, $56,000. Anticipated 2020 revenue, $1.5 million, which includes $750,000 of community development block grant funds budgeted in the capital budget. There's no positional changes of note. Staffing remains budgeted at 30 employees for 2020. Special Summer Food Service Trust Fund, beginning balance is anticipated to be $602,000. Anticipated revenue of $525,000. No positional changes. Staffing remains budgeted at 2 full-time, plus funding for part-time and seasonal employees. Frick Parks Trust Fund, projected beginning balance, $1,648,000. Anticipated 2020 revenue of $825,000. Trust Fund no longer used for maintenance of Frick Park. Now it's solely a pass-through for the Parks Conservancy and the Environmental Center. The other line item is the Phipps Conservatory. Current balance is $70,000. Those funds are now controlled by the Department of Public Works, and that was per our agreement with the -- with Phipps when they separated from the city to pay for the steam heating There's, as we've mentioned before, and there's no Parks Trust Fund that's created at this time, so we're not sure on how that may or may not affect the budget. The Special Events Trust Fund was transferred to Public Safety in 2018, and the Shenley Park Rink Trust Fund was transferred to DPW also in 2018. So that's why you don't see those things there now. With that, I'd like to hand it over to the Director for any comments or highlights he would like to include for 2020.
Before we do that, Director, if I could just mention that we're joined by two other council members, Ms. Darlene Harris, thank you for attending, and Ms. Deborah Gross.
Thanks for attending. Nice to see you all. I just want to thank Council, thank Councilman Coghill, Budget Director Urbannick, thanks a lot. I'd like to -- pretty excited to be sitting up here today with two Assistant Directors. You all know Luann Haran, but Senior Programs, fantastic to have her. Excuse me, I think I'm getting a little cold. And newest to the team, I think she's in her sixth week, right? Catherine Vargas, so she's Community Recreation, Youth and Families, and Catherine comes to us with an array of experience, and already she's amplifying what we're doing in the department. So we've had a lot of support from Council, from the administration. We've had a lot of direct support from Councilman Coghill, so we're happy to be here today to talk about 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Thank you. Luann? Did you want to?
I'm always happy to be here and represent Parks for the upcoming year in the budget. We're doing good things in the Senior Program. I've been out visiting the centers, working on trying to bring up our attendance in our senior centers, trying to implement some late-afternoon programs to try and bring in some of the younger generational consumers into the programs, and we're working on some of that. We're making some things happen. Morningsides, trying some more programs, offering some. I believe Beachview is going to be bringing some programs, like into that 5 to 8 o'clock range, so we can try and bring in some of the younger seniors, like I said, that maybe are home watching their grandchildren. Oh, okay. That are home watching their -- I'm sorry, that's getting back to your animal rescue league comment I heard earlier. That's okay. That's all right. I love animals.
I think she'll support that.
I know she would. She loves animals like I do.
We all love animals, and we all love parks.
That's a good answer for her phone. That's a good ringtone. Fits her perfectly.
Not enough to raise taxes.
There you go.
I recall her favorite animal is a rottweiler she would bring in for a visit with the little painted nails and stuff. It would come to biz all the time. So sweet. So sweet. But yes, so yeah, and I've been out visiting the centers, talking to them as -- I'm new to my role as well. So I go out to visit, talk with the seniors all the time. I've made a couple visits up to Sheridan, working with that group, and I've been to Beachview, Homewood, which I find Homewood to be a very well-attended center. That community up there is wonderful at Homewood. They're so engaged there. We've done a lot of work at the Market House, getting that reopened with air conditioning, made a lot of improvements there. We'll still make them, and we're going to keep trying to bring in a lot more seniors into the program, trying to make better relationships with everyone in the community, trying to advertise more. And what I'm going to try and do is we're going to try and put a little thing on our Facebook page, try and showcase a member at each one of the centers, maybe once a month. I went around to Sheridan, and I met a young attendee there, and she gave me her story about how that center at West End saved her life, because she was sitting at home by herself every day and really lonely and didn't know what she was going to do, and somebody invited her to come and attend the senior center, and she did. And she told me how it saved her life, and I asked her if she would appear on and do a little segment on Facebook, and she said she would. So we're going to go out, and that's my segment. We're going to start doing that on Facebook and go around and get a little story from everybody about, you know, how the centers help them, and I think that will help market our centers and, you know, get the people at home that aren't, you know, feel that they're not ready for a center, to get a sense of, come on in and try, and get a sense of community. So I'm out there trying, you know, to bring more people in.
And before I make any comments, Catherine, did you want to say anything? And let me ask you this, Catherine, are you from Pittsburgh, or are you just new to the department, or are you new to Pittsburgh?
So I've been in Pittsburgh for about 11 years, so new to the department, but been in the city. My background is in youth programs, so I'm really excited. The last six weeks, it's been a bit of a whirlwind, but I've made it out to almost all the rec centers, meaning this, the aquatics team, our food program team, our city sports team. I mean, for me, what I'm learning is that there's really amazing people doing this work. I know, like in your district, Hakim, I got to make it out to the Community Hoops Event, and just to see the energy that is happening in these rec centers, it's more than a place that families might go to. It's a connection point that they're making. Met so many people already, similar to Lou's story, young people who now work in our rec team, who grew up in the rec centers. I mean, these are really important community assets, so I'm learning that, being out there. It's also been really great working with this team, learned a lot from Director Chapman and Luann, so I've had a great experience so far, and I'm hopeful that in the coming months, I get to come out and meet with everybody at Council and get to know, from your perspective, what's going on in your district, and also how my role can help facilitate some of your goals.
That's great, Catherine. Well, welcome, and I will say, I was supposed to play in that basketball.
I hear another one's coming up in January, so.
I was scared I might not be able to walk the next day, though, but I will do the next one. But I will say Hakim has been phenomenal up there. This guy, he has his pulse on the neighborhood. He knows the kids that come in that bring trouble, and the ones that are good and bad, and this time of year with Santa Claus and all, he's making a list and he's checking it twice, I got to tell you. So he's on top of everything, and from my own personal experience, I will say, working with Lou and -- can I call you Lou? I hear everybody calling you Lou now, right?
Yeah, they call me Lou, yeah.
Okay. And Director Chapman, nothing but positive, really engaging experiences. I mean, we threw this, what was it, up at Moore Park, it was an anniversary, 85th anniversary, and your work on that was out of this world. He could not have done that without you, and I think we had probably 2,000, 3,000 people there throughout the day. It was incredible. I mean, the mayor came up, and there was just people everywhere, and it just brought the community together, people I haven't seen for 40 years, you know? So it really was fantastic, and without your help, there's no way that happens, whether it was the stage, the permitting, everything that comes along with it. So, and I always toot your horn, and it's not just because I chair the committee, it's because I see it firsthand. I don't do the same about all the departments. In fact, most of the departments I have a really good working relationship with, but yeah, it's really easy being the chair of your department. I get zero complaints, you know? And when events like I have up in the neighborhood and special events come about, you know, you're on the scene. I know, Ross, you were there, you know, when Tony Guarino and we were putting this thing together, and I was kind of scratching my head and thinking, oh my goodness, is he, you know, nobody's getting into, but it went off beautifully, and he credits you in your department fully for how that went off, because I couldn't have done without so, so.
Can I say one thing? You're talking about Christmas and Santa Claus and our team, and anybody listening, please come downtown into the city county building and see the lobby with all the gingerbread houses. They're just absolutely beautiful since we've -- I think there's, what, Ross, 475 gingerbread houses down there?
I will second that.
It just smells so wonderful.
I particularly like the ones with the bus coming out, you know? Did you see those ones?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, the creativity, the artistic ability, I'm in awe of some of those things, and you know, I consider myself somewhat of an amateur sculpture artist myself, and I want to enter one next year is what I really want to do.
They're fabulous.
Who does that? Where do they come from? Their schools and organizations? I saw Girl Scouts and anybody who wants to. Is that basically it?
Yeah, and you know, there's a lot of, there's a big nod and hat tip always to the folks in Public Safety, the Special Events Team, who worked with our own community enrichment program, Nancy Burns and her team. That's who facilitated that gingerbread house display, you know, with a lot of input from James Hill in the mayor's office, so it looks wonderful. So we're, and to your point about the event at Moore Park, we couldn't do that, those kinds of things without the help of Public Works and others too. So it's a real collaborative effort. So I'm happy to be --
Thank you, right.
I'm happy to facilitate anything when we can engage and collaborate, and I think our department does it pretty well with other departments and external entities. So that makes it, that makes it all worthwhile.
And thank you for pointing that out.
Oh, you're welcome.
There were others involved, as you said, Public Works.
Yes, sir, always, always.
You've just got to watch Councilwoman Gross. I think she's been picking chocolates off the gingerbread house.
I haven't been anywhere near them, I promise. I promise. I actually haven't even seen them yet. I'm sad. I literally haven't walked through yet. But I'm not above picking chocolate off of other places, so.
So before I turn it over to Councilwoman Gross and Councilwoman Harris for their questions, I just wanted to say how impressed I am. It's not many times you put something in front of us, and when we look at your operations, decrease, 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 increase, decrease, decrease, more decreases and increases. So it shows that you're fiscally, you know, responsible, and I love to see that myself. I think that's fantastic, so. No matter if we're talking $1,000, or $10,000, or $1 million, it all adds up.
Every penny counts. Every penny counts.
That's right. So thanks for your work. I'm proud to be chair of this committee. Again, it's, I get zero complaints on Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, sir.
With that, I'll turn it over to, which one of y'all would like to go first?
Are you ready? I'm still looking for numbers.
I'm still catching my breath.
All right, I'll jump in then, thank you. Great, thank you all for being here. We're very excited about the programs that you were speaking about. I think council members that I've spoken with often agree that we wish we could do more programming, so I really appreciate how much you're able to do with the budgets that you've been given. As you were mentioning, I've got so many constituents who tell me stories about how they grew up in the recreation centers, and we don't have a youth recreation center. So it's, you know, it's one of the things that is really a hot topic of conversation, I can promise you, in Bloomfield right now, because there's the empty building sitting there at the Bloomfield Pool, which I know you all were so gracious to come out and do a walk-through of the park. And it's really, since the conversations have continued for the last couple of months, really the desire to realize that for a park to be kind of a healthy, safe, welcoming area, you really kind of, the programming is an important element, right? So not just having an empty space, because that might not be the, you know, safest place that you want to send your five-year-old or seven-year-old to unattended, but to have a place that's full of programming, that's full of adults, that's a safe place, it's full of activities. It makes everything actually more welcoming, so we're happy to talk about ways that we can empower you to do more programming in the parks. I'd like to shift a little bit to a slightly, a couple of technical questions. I don't want to scare you with them, because you heard some of them earlier today. Just a couple of hours ago, we approved the agreements to continue with these trust funds that Mr. Urbannick was just talking about, and so they were just given provisional approval earlier today. And I asked a couple of questions, and that, again, are the Parks Trust Funds that already exist. It's not a new one to receive the additional millage, but these are ones that are already housed in your section of the budget. The Rad Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, Melon Park Tennis Trust Fund, Senior Citizens Program Trust Fund, Special Summer Food Service Trust Fund, Frick Park Trust Fund, and Phipps Conservatory. It doesn't say the word "trust fund," but I'm assuming, because it's under the trust fund, so that also is. Yep, all right. So, as noted, and we could see it on this, are these documents online with Legistar Bill that you hand out to us as members here at the table?
These will be.
Yeah, okay, so, you know, people at home can pull these up and attach to this session. It's, as Mr. Urbannick already stated, that what the balance is and what the revenue is projected to be, but what we also heard earlier today is that, for example, the Melon Park Tennis Trust Fund, it's pretty straightforward. Like if you lease out just that tennis bubble at the Melon Park, and you pay a permit fee, that, that, every penny goes in this trust fund. Am I understanding that correctly?
Councilwoman, can I, I'd like to, so you're speaking about the facility usage agreement, the legislation from the Finance Department, is that correct?
Today, earlier today, yeah.
Right. So the way that the facility usage agreements are used by our department, and we do have a record and a repository of those that we do, they're not, they're not permits, per se. Permits are for shelter rentals, they're for birthday parties. They're for kind of one-off events. The facility usage agreements are kind of a longer-standing mini-lease agreement, so.
I'm glad I asked, because that's not what we were told earlier.
Yes, ma'am. So they move into an arena whereby at least we might have had.
You're a tennis club, and you're saying, this is our season, and we want to have this spot on Wednesday every week, or something?
Well, for instance, there may be, there's a summer camp group that has utilized a Warrington Recreation Center for a summer camp in conjunction with our programming there for a few years now. They want to come in and have come in for about two and a half months to utilize that space to amplify what we're doing in that center. This agreement allows us to seek clearances, to get insurance, and to have a lease agreement, a mini-lease agreement. It's not structured over a five or 10-year period, but for a few months. Excuse me, I'm going to sneeze here real soon.
I, so, I feel you. I feel you. I'm going the same way today.
I won't sneeze in your direction. So what they allow us to do is to engage kind of a community partner, an organization, for more than a one-time event. It's not exactly a community group, it's someone that wants to have kind of a presence and help amplify program, and it has a real direct community kind of response to it.
So the legislation earlier today allowed you to enter into those agreements?
Yeah, any city department, it's, again, it's legislation that financed, and I think the policy was drafted by them a few years ago, two or three years ago, I'm not real sure. It moved, it seemed to move away from just some, a department having an MOU with not a lot of meat there, to having something whereby we collect insurance certificates, it goes to the Law Department, the Finance Department signs it. So it allows us to enter into a lease agreement for someone to help carry out our work for us. So we had.
I'm glad I asked. Let me also say that one of the things I mentioned about these cooperative agreements is, in every case, it is something that we are not operating and someone is. And so it's the terms of that understanding.
In every.
Who's doing which thing? And is there any dollars exchanged?
I.
That is the nature of a cooperative agreement.
Yes, so these agreements typically, in most cases, there is some really modest fee structure to them. That's not, it's my understanding, it's not part of the permit, the fee schedule. They're really nominal. It would be my preference to have no fee tied to these, quite honestly, because of the work they're doing in conjunction with the work we're doing, because it results in to nothing. The maximum of $10,000. We probably see maybe $10,000 across all seven or eight that we might have had this past year. So it's been a mechanism for us to continue a community engagement touchpoint to help us do things that we just don't have the resources to do, and/or something that somebody else is really good at doing. And they might be representing an area or a group of kids or folks in a way that we can't quite do, facilitate on our own. So for us, it's a really nice vehicle, and the fact that it's vetted by law, and, you know, we meet with those folks, and we've met recently about it.
You know, Director, I'm going to just ask some direct questions then.
Sure.
So in the example that you mentioned in Warrington.
Yeah.
Where does that revenue go? Because that doesn't seem to fit into any of the trust funds that I'm interested in here.
That revenue, since it's at Rexent, that would go into the general fund.
Okay, so yeah, so I'm interested in these trust funds, so that's why I brought up the example of maybe the Melon Park Tennis Trust Fund.
That one, I don't think we've ever, I think what, yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, Luann might know this, but.
Projected balance, anticipated 2020 revenue, $390,000.
We don't have any facility usage agreements that go into Melon Tennis.
Okay, so what I was asking about then is technically correct, that for the Melon Park Tennis Trust Fund, that is just for when people pull a normal permit?
The revenue that you see on Director Urbannick's report is revenue from payments to play based on the fee schedule that's legislated.
And so you could just go to the website, and you say, I'm reserving the court for this time, and that revenue goes in there.
That's correct.
Now then, you brought up something different, which is that, I'm just going to wait, in other places, there are the, what did you call them again? Non-something agreements, non, you just called them something.
The facility usage agreements?
Facility usage agreements, okay. So those are in addition and above and different than this.
Yeah, I wouldn't say they're in addition to, they're just different. And so if somebody wanted to.
I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to my questioning. I apologize.
Sure, it's okay.
I'm interested in these trust funds. So the Melon Park Tennis Trust Fund, you pull, you rent the court, the money goes into this trust fund. Now, how is the money expended from this trust fund?
It's, right now, it's housed to support operational costs, you'll see some.
Just walk me through it. Just walk me through it. You need to buy new nets.
Yes.
You get to buy it out of this trust fund.
That is correct.
What happens?
What do you mean? How do we expend that money?
Yes, that's what the question is. How do you expend that money?
It's no different than we would, I mean, Luann can speak up.
We pay invoices for the nets. We'll pay for instructors from there. We pay for tennis instructors that we have.
You get an invoice, and then you just submit it through OMB, and when OMB cuts the check that gets signed by the Finance Director and the controller, it's drawn down out of this account.
Exactly.
It does not come to council table?
No, unless it's an explanatory, and you see it on the invoices.
Okay, similarly, the Rad Parks and Rec Trust Fund, let's say you need to spend some money out of the anticipated $1.237 million this year, you are gonna spend what? This just talks about some staffing. What's an example of something that you would use that trust fund for?
This year, the Alphabet Trails and Tales Event, the big annual event at Frick Park, that's in a Rad Park.
You get a caterer, there's an invoice.
There's vendors.
You just say, I need to pay for this food, and this money comes out of this trust fund, and it is dot com to council table.
Now, we also have, you know how we come every year and we do what we call the generic piece of legislation for consultants, $10,000 and under? We have a separate piece. We may have a contract there that we would, that's separate from those facility usage agreements. We will hire a consultant of some sort that we would pay out of that trust fund. That could come up, and that could be for a tennis instructor, maybe what we pay out of that Rad Trust Fund. So we might have Jose Mears, he's our tennis instructor. We might write it, if he's doing something in Shenley or something, we might write a consultant, which is separate, and we would pay that invoice as a, it would go through the controller's process, but we'd have a contract for that, which is separate from those MOU agreements, which is vetted through the Law Department process. through the law department process, but it's not a facility usage agreement.
Now, council set up these trust funds, and the controller has to maintain them, right?
Yes.
And then, but, when were these set up? I mean, they were set up some time ago, right?
A long time ago, yes.
And so, whatever language was used to set them up, it, they just went away, and they don't, the expenditures are just like a line item for you, that's outside of, you know, other than this conversation right now about how much money there is right here, right now, the Mellon Park Tennis Trust Fund has $2,133,161.
Over, over 20 years.
And it has an addition, that's the balance.
Over 20 years.
That's the balance, that's today's balance.
Over 20 years.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
That's today's balance. And the anticipated revenue is $390,000 for this year.
Yes.
So, similarly, these are funds that were set up and of no termination, they don't expire, they don't have to be renewed as a trust fund each year, and that, frankly, I don't know what the language is that was created around them. So, they, we would have to figure out what year council created them, go back to pull up that language, and see what the structure of those trust funds are.
Councilwoman Gross, in the back of the budget, for the Mellon Trust Fund, for example, on page 343, we do detail the budget for the trust fund.
Is the legislative language there, that I was just saying I would have to look back the year it was created to find the legislative language?
It essentially gives a description, it tells you the authorization, authorizing resolution, the year that was established and/or changed.
Back of the capital budget, I'm assuming?
It, it would be the operating budget.
Back of the operating budget, do you have a page for us?
Yes, for the Mellon Park Trust Fund, it'd be page 343.
These are the exact same page numbers as the PDF online, I'm assuming?
Yes.
So, again, people online, if they want to follow along, if they like, I'm on one of those, like, educational video things.
Believe it or not, we have a bunch of budget nerds out there that love doing this stuff, just like me.
One hair, right?
Yeah.
So, there is a description at the top, this paragraph here, that says...
Correct.
It's not technically what the conditions are, but it's a gist.
That's, that's correct, it doesn't have the exact wording, but it's sorted us, it gives you the idea of what the resolution says.
It does have the year.
It does have the...
And the resolution number, so that's helpful, so you can actually look up the legislation fairly easily.
The other comment I, I would make is that the budget line items are all there, so essentially, we are, you're able to view, and by casting a vote on the total budget, you can, you'll be approving, essentially helping to approve this as well, too, so approving on an annual. The only thing additional that I will say is that they are required to follow the purchasing requirements for the city.
Of course, do the controller's office have then a line items that match these line item numbers of expenditures?
Yes, they should.
In the audit, so that would be in the combined CAFER?
The CAFER will mention these trust funds as other special funds, yeah.
And does it have that detail of breakdown?
It, I'm not sure, I'd have to ask the controller, take a look at my CAFER to see that, I don't pay attention to that one.
So, we know what every year council has projected to spend...
That's right, and the actual...
But we don't know, looking retrospectively, what was spent.
Yes, we could find that out, though. Typically, and maybe that's a good suggestion, that we should follow as we do in our budget, but have a, in this one, for example, have an actual 2018 to show what was expended as well, too.
That's great.
The council did a few years ago, required all trust funds to be put in the budget.
So, there's, I have an additional question, so, given these expenditures, when your budget, I think I lost my page, when I went, flipped to the back here, I see your personnel budget was roughly only about three and a half million? Is that salaries and benefits, or am I just remembering one of the lines?
Benefits, I think, were separate there.
It doesn't actually say it on Bill's one pager, it was, I had to look it up here.
Yeah, personnel and salaries are projected to be 3.3 million.
Alright.
Just, just salaries, with benefits and everything else, that includes healthcare and such, we go to 4.776.
So, did you lump the expenditures for consultants or salaries that are under the trust funds? So, that tennis coordinator that you might want to pay out of something, or the professional and technical services, well, there's some employee benefits and salaries that were paid, that are projected to be paid out of the Mellon Park Trust Fund?
Correct.
That is combined into the Parks and Rec budget?
No, that does not feed up, that's separate. What, what you see in, what you see in this is the general fund budget.
Got it.
So, that's our general fund operating, this would be a trust fund, so quote it, you would consider it potentially off-book.
There are, there are other jobs off-book, even in our current trust fund structure?
Yes, they're on-book within the trust fund.
I'm just reading what you just said.
Yeah, they're on, they're on-book in the trust fund.
Got it. Different section of the budget manual here.
That's correct.
So, you have your projected salaries, that I lost the page of, in Parks and Rec, again, just for clarity, and then there are other jobs elsewhere accounted and paid for. Alright, I just, just double checking on that. In fact, this one page, from 343 to 344, shows full-time employees for 2019 at 3.5, and full-time employees at 2020 at 2.9. Good for this one, just, just checking.
And then, and then...
But they still, those are city employees.
But this, the part-time are just a dollar amount, so I can reference that.
Yeah, but the full-time are afforded all the same benefits and rights, and they're all civil service employees, and have their union membership, but still, it's a pot of money.
Yes, oh, yes.
That, and that's the topic of the day, is the pots of money, that's why we're at a budget hearing. Alright.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross, you know, I'm, I'm really getting enthralled with trust fund talk. I look forward to a lot more of it, so. I did want to recognize, Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith has joined us, and I will turn it over. Councilwoman Harris, did you, were you, was your hand up, did you have, were you ready to go?
Yeah.
Good deal.
Okay, I, the reason I have, sorry I left the table, but, my love for animals.
Yes.
There was a hawk got on Grant and for that, that was injured, so it got animal controlled, it's taken, so the Wildlife Center. So, we'll find out how he is later, but that's what my staff was ringing the phone for. I, on the senior centers, now, how many are there now?
Thirteen.
Okay. And you should be coming up with a fourteenth one as soon as they work on Cali Gedman Center.
Okay.
Now, rec centers, how many rec centers do we have that we pay for?
Ten.
Ten?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And they're in every area except for basically the north side.
We have...
We have one very small one.
Jefferson Rec, that's correct.
Right, and we have one very small senior center on our side. So, that's why the neighbors, some of the neighbors are going out, because they want to just put four walls up and not put Cali Rec back together again, so I'm hoping that Domy is hearing me on that one. Because I, I, actually, we had quite a few more senior centers, and we were supposed to have a new rec center that was supposed to take care of the seniors, boy scouts and girl scouts, there was 1.6 million sitting there, and the mayor decided to take that money out of there. Yes, so, I don't think that's happening. So, I'm hoping that Cali Rec comes along in the historic building that it's in. But I, I want to thank you all for what you do, great job.
Thank you.
I, I don't know you as well.
She's new.
It's been six years.
And I know you said something about you're with youth, okay, can you define that to me, what is that?
Youth programs?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so I worked in after-school programming for a really long time, mostly, actually, Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith used to work where I worked, but working on everything from curriculum to activities, to, you know, making sure food, things like the food program that is run, actually, the city runs the largest food, summer food programs, summer programs, after-school programs, some before-school programs, some during school, so kind of everywhere. I particularly worked most closely with high school students, but I've done a lot of work around curriculum, professional development, kind of things with younger kids as well.
Okay, with Pittsburgh Public Schools, or...
Yeah, um, yeah.
What are these partner, I'm trying to get to...
Sure, well, the work is...
What is the city paying for? That's what I'm trying to find out.
Respective to Catherine's position?
Right.
Oh, um, great, do you want to answer that?
I, well, yeah, please do, but I, I would think that, well, I, six weeks has been pretty, pretty amazing six weeks to have Catherine aboard, because she comes to us with the experience that she's mentioned, but...
Right, I'm hearing all that.
What, what I haven't been able to do, quite honestly, is get out of the operational game. The last two years have been me trying to fix a cer...
Put it together, because it was a complete mess when you got it, it really was.
So, you know, with the help of everyone here, and newest member's Catherine, now we're in a position where we can better manage, more transparently, all of the engagement stuff that we have to do daily internally and externally, but we can be more into that program arena. We can do the things with Catherine that I ha, I don't, I can't, haven't been able to get to. So, with direct support that goes to the whole of community recreation, all of aquatics, the food program, community enrichment, and Mellon Tennis, almost everything that isn't senior center, and those things that tie into those trust funds, to have someone like Catherine here only amplifies what we're able to do. So, this was a position that was put in 2019's budget, this current budget, but we only recently hired Catherine, it took almost all year to get through appointing Luanne and then bringing Catherine aboard. So, I, oh, please, please.
Oh, no, no, I don't want to.
No, please.
I was just going to say, well, and what I'm excited about particularly, having been able to go out to the different rec centers, and I've been taking notes on the particular rec concerns that you guys have mentioned, you know, really looking at what, when people, when people sign up for our City Parks or City of Pittsburgh program, what, what does that look like, and how does it responsive to the community, and also responsive to best practices, and how we should be working with young people, and like, our summer camp coming up, there's a lot of opportunity to do some really cool things with that, making sure that everybody who's on staff feels like they're supported in the work that they're doing, that they have the right kind of professional development and training to be doing that work. Those sorts of things are things that I'm hoping to, to make sure, you know, on the ground is happening, I mean, even as supporting our program supervisors, I'm learning, you know, there's, there's things that will happen here, and making sure that we have a streamlined communication out to all these different places where community-facing work is happening, that seems to be something that's going to be, you know, a big part of my role, and, and I, I've been excited about a lot of the potential that's there. There's really awesome people, really awesome people doing this work, and really great things that are happening in, in the various rec centers, and so I think that, you know, what I'm bringing is a lens of, you know, how do we take what we know we're doing well, and really bring that up to, you know, the next place. And the other thing that we haven't mentioned, but the Rec to Tech Initiative is going to be a big thing to happen in our centers, it has a lot of potential to amplify youth programs, but also making sure that our folks on the ground feel just as ready and prepared to do that work, I think is going to be a really important piece of how that also rolls out.
Okay, and I would hope that, you know, just hearing this on the news last night, that anyone working with children have clearances.
Oh, definitely.
Definitely have clearances.
That's her departmental policy.
Yeah.
It has been for, long before I got to Parks, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
But even my, on my first day, our first meeting, clearances were like, one of the first things we talked about, in terms of staffing, so I know it's a critical piece of safety, for sure.
Right, and, and I just can't say enough about making sure janitors in the building, anybody in the building with kids should have their clearances, if not, they can work somewhere with adults, or, but not seniors, because you really have to watch with the seniors also.
We, we make sure there's clearances for our seniors as well.
Yes.
Yeah, that's part of it as well.
And, and I know how you are, so I didn't have to ask that question.
Hey, yeah, you have to ask.
And, and I know you very well, too, and thank God we have you now.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman.
And, it's true, for the whole department, and you do have a wonderful department, and you watch how you're spending the money. I'm wondering how the Rad Fund actually, how it comes out to $84,607. Do we just get the pot of Rad money, and you're given so much?
Where are you looking at, Councilwoman?
On the back.
Under the trust fund?
I guess it's the back, yes.
For the Rad.
Oh, the reimbursement, this right here.
Oh, that's just, that's a reimbursement of, that we pay from the Rad Trust Fund into the general fund, that's something different. What we have on, that's money that we owe for benefits into the general fund from the Rad Trust Fund, that's...
Okay, so what do we take out?
So, what we, we reimburse the general fund for employees from the Rad Trust Fund, that's what that piece represents.
We have...
And it just goes into the general fund, it doesn't go back into your programs.
Right, so...
That's a reimbursement for benefits.
So, the annual Rad monies that we receive, I guess alongside of Public Works, I'm not sure whom else might receive them, ours are kind of specific to programming, and those, those things are not so capital-related, like Public Works' Rad monies might be, but there's a personnel cost in, for Rad, so that's that reimbursement piece that Luanne's mentioned. So, in addition to anything that we may do programmatically in a Rad Park or activate with those Rad monies, there are operational costs that are personnel-related.
Okay, and then the summer food program, that's done with Pittsburgh Public Schools.
They're the primary sponsor vendor for us, so that, right now, it's our after-school program, and the summer, it's our summer food program.
I think when, when you talk about the food programs and talk about the city's the largest, you have to put the Pittsburgh Public Schools into that, because that's really where the money come, or where the food comes from.
Yes.
And are we reimbursing them some money here, or...
They reimburse us.
Okay.
So, the money comes from basically the federal government through the, weirdly, through the Department of Education, and then it trickles down through the public schools for us. So, it's a, it's a pretty lean operation in how we run it, there's not a lot of money in that trust fund every year.
Right.
And it really ramps up in the summer, I think. Carly Gedman, the program supervisor, there might have been 130,000 meals and snacks served this past summer, so there's quite an, 80-plus food site, so we're just one provider for that program, as Catherine indicated, but it's a really, really important, we're looking to amplify that, too, but, yes, there are monies that are afforded to us via the public school system that make it possible.
Right, and, and it's always good to sort of, you know, let people know that, because I don't know if people really know that that comes from the Pittsburgh Public Schools, and then the funding is federal, so we are reimbursed for staff.
Correct, a longstanding relationship, I don't know how many years, but it's decades?
It's years and years and years and years and years, right. And they take care of any of our children, or they come that, it's a great program, I just can't say enough about it.
Yeah.
Are the, Crossing Guard still working with that program, too?
No, they work within the program, they're PPS employees, or...
Well, there are employees, but...
Oh, they support.
For the summer.
Yes.
The summer, they come and work for us, yes, yes.
Right, okay.
They're in with the pools as well, yes.
Yeah, we get a lot of the summer, the summer PPS staff that help acquire... Yeah, we get a lot of the summer, the summer PPS staff that help aquatics, that help the food program, and they've been committed to doing it, even based on what we're able to pay. And they, and they make a difference in the delivery of those services every year.
And who's, your pools?
Pools.
Pools.
Yeah, well, we're all pools, but Catherine, I guess it's technically pools. I mean Shelley Terleki is the pool guru, but.
Right, but.
Yes, ma'am.
Big chief's here. Yeah, the one issue that I've been having and I've been chasing them back and I just thought of it is the Sioux Murray Pool, and I don't think any other council member is having the same issue. But the SEA tries to get rid of the.
The geese.
The geese.
Yes, ma'am.
And they, they chase the geese up to Sioux Murray Pool. And each morning, your people are out there haffing, you should see. I mean, I don't know if you've been up there, like after a night's worth of the geese.
I haven't seen it, no.
But the water has changed, actually changes color, and they're still there. So what we've had is some volunteers that have some dogs to chase them right back down. And this is what has just been going on constantly. So I really think you need to have a talk with SEA about that. Because if you're going to chase the geese, you chase them down the river. Okay, but you don't chase them up into a swimming pool that children are swimming in.
Certainly.
And, I mean, you should have seen the concrete and your people.
They're wonderful.
They, they were working their rens off and they would not open up until they could get that water clear.
You can't open before, exactly.
It's, it's very sad and you just can't keep doing that. They keep moving them up there and up to Lake Elizabeth. And now they're starting to cross the street and get up into where the homes are. But it's, it's really bad. And I'd hate to have to have something happen with the swimming pool just because somebody has their dogs chasing them from, from down on North Shore up to the neighborhoods. They need to be chasing them down a river.
Thank you for bringing that up, Councilman.
But that's a note, and I watch, I mean, I watched them. I went in this, the water was actually discolored every morning, every morning from chasing the geese. It's only one time a year that that happens.
Right, usually later in the season.
There's a lot of chasing before that.
I thought they found some kind of sound or something to play to chase them out. I think Shelley was talking to me about that. I'm going to double check with her and see.
Yeah, but they shouldn't have to be.
They're in the first place.
They shouldn't be there in the first place. They haven't been there. Whoever has the dogs needs to send them where they sent them before. But that is, I mean, that could cost us a lot of money to just keep putting into one swimming pool. And I know there were a couple of people that were upset when they seen a dog in the water. I says, well, come on in and see why we have the dog run up there. And they're volunteer dogs that have been helping us. And I just want to thank them for their listening to the program out there. But I don't have much more. I don't think I have anything else for you. No, I think that.
We can always come back to you.
No, we can't. I have a director waiting over there.
Thank you.
Is that the only reason you're here?
Yeah, that's it. Yeah. I figure why do I show up here when we're here asking the questions?
Go ahead.
Okay, well, thank you for being here still. I just, I don't want to repeat anything that's already said. I actually was in a meeting about a rec center or a community center that one of our churches wants to, wants to build. And so just trying to understand what they were trying to do. But I, but we also are working with Joey Porter in our area because we don't have a rec center in our area. And we have Reem Rec, which was closed, we opened. I go through this every year. But we have a, we're trying and a commitment from the mayor to work with us to get a center open. So I think that we will have something soon. I just don't know how soon. But I do want to say that I have some concerns. We have the Rec to Tech program, and I think you did something in Langley. And, or you were doing something in Langley. And that's so difficult for people to access, so I really hope that we would consider maybe doing some adult programs and not just, recreation shouldn't just be for young kids. I mean, we have a lot of adults, young adults, and especially coding classes as we're preparing our workforce and our young people for the future. I wish we would offer that free, some free classes in hours where young adults who have to work might be able to attend in the evening for an hour or two. So it's not so daunting for them to learn, but it actually creates an opportunity instead of another obstacle. So I, and I mentioned that last year, so I'm mentioning it again this year. I'd really like to see that, you know, let's move forward on some of that. And I want to acknowledge Flo, who also does the food program. And I want to say, I mean, she's working part-time, correct?
She's full-time.
She's full-time now?
Yes, ma'am.
Full-time.
Okay, and she gets, tell me, how many years does she have to be there before she can?
She has, it has eight years before you get into pension.
How many does she have, do you know?
Well, she has a lot of years part-time. I'm trying to think how many years part-time. She doesn't have enough to get her vested. Because she's been, when the previous director was here, she became full-time. He made her administrative.
So I just really want to talk about how we can help Flo because how old, I mean, I don't want to say how old she is.
I don't say how old she is.
She's a little bit older than me, I'll say.
A bit older, a little, one little bit older.
She may have kids that are older than I am, but I'll say that she's fed kids across the city for a very long time. And I feel like we owe her some kind of gratitude.
We feel the same way about Flo.
And so I'd just really like to make sure if there's something I can do to help with that, if it's in the budget or something we need to, Councilwoman Harris can talk to the pension office, if something we need to do, please let us know. Because I do feel like she has done a lot for this, for this area.
We feel the same way about Flo. We feel very endearing to Flo for her service, all the years of service.
Yeah, she's just amazing.
Yes, she is.
And I really want to say that our Sheridan seniors, they're happy with the director that's there now. I don't know who that is, and so I want to put a good word in for, I can't remember.
David Snyderman?
Yes, they love him.
Yeah, I know, they, they.
And Pat Freeze, of course, they love.
They love Pat, yes, and David.
They love all our center directors in our side of town. I mean, they, they love them right now. But right, they were having trouble, we were having some trouble with Sheridan, and they just told me that they just love this person.
I've been going up there trying to work with them a little bit and, yeah, David's been good. They told me they like him.
So I told them I put a word in for him, so I'm putting a word in publicly so they know I did it.
Okay, very good. That's good news.
And then I just really want to ask a few questions about the, I understand we're having a difficult time keeping crossing, or keeping lifeguards. And somebody had said that now a kid could go and get a job making fifteen dollars an hour or whatever at one of the fast food places, someplace like that they said, they mentioned. And so that's what the kids are doing, that they're not lifeguarding because the money, the, the time, the training, all that stuff. And I wonder what you're doing. Was that already addressed? Because if it was, tell me now because I won't go down it.
Yeah, the last, was it this year, was it twenty, twenty-ninth, early, I think it was earlier this year, was it twenty eighteen? There was a modest adjustment per, per rate, per lifeguard kind of tier. Because you're tiered, if you come in more experienced, you could make over fifteen dollars an hour. So there was an adjustment to try to catch us up to where, I think where the county pays their lifeguards, which is a little bit more. But for the last several years, there's been a strain with recruiting, recruiting and retention. I think it's a little bit, it goes beyond just what we pay. Sometimes we, Shelley will recruit, we just have a hard time retaining them. Or we can only retain them for a certain period in the summertime and they're off to school earlier. So we did some, we tried some creative marketing last year. The team attended a number of job fairs. We're going to do the same this year. They get the word out everywhere, so the, kind of the active recruitment campaign starts and, starts now, really to get the word out. But it's been an issue for us. It's been hard and it seems to get harder every year. And no one can really identify what specifically, if we paid more, I'm sure, I mean, we would, we could capture more.
So I think when I, you know, when my kids were younger, the lifeguards were teachers in the summertime, who were off all summer. And so they looked for summertime work, and so that was a way that they were filled, but the jobs were filled. But I guess that pay now is, doesn't even come close to.
We do get some, I don't know if you were at the table, but we get some public school workers that help us out in the summers. And they have for years with Shelley. So they do do that and they do it at the rates that we pay. Could we get more? Sure we could.
So I'd really like to make sure, I'd have some conversations about the pools in my ear. Because I actually got complaints this year, which I usually don't, but the year before I got a couple, and then this year was a lot more.
Okay.
And so I'd like to.
Respective to?
There was a lot of stuff. And then when I talked to Shelley, she put like a little bit, you know, she shed a lot of light on some of those concerns. So I'll just, I just think that I'd like to have some conversations about those, and in my senior centers I'd like to talk about too.
Okay, okay.
So maybe I'll schedule a meeting with you, with you for all that. But I want to mention that I think that this is an awesome team.
Thank you.
I think you two have been doing a wonderful job. I mean, amazing. You've carried this department for a very long time on a shoestring. And you, you coming on board was really, really, gave a lot of trust to the, to the, to the department that I think people felt really good about.
I agree with you.
Yeah, and, but having Catherine here, I worked with her and I've seen her long before anybody mentioned her with the United Way, before anybody mentioned her here in the city. And I've seen firsthand the work that she does. I mean, amazing. She is amazing. So I think together that you'll be such an amazing trio. And that our kids and our communities and our seniors and everyone can, will definitely benefit. So I'm looking forward to working with all three of you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Welcome aboard. It was one of the most exciting times. I was like, oh my God, they hired somebody.
Yeah, we felt the same way.
Before, before I turn it over to Councilwoman Gross again, I just wanted to add one thing. It's taken me two years to lose the senior center, lingo. You two are converting me back. It's always been a senior center to me, but it is a healthy, active, living center, right? I just got it last week and you two are.
I will say this, because a lot of people who know it, even the young people, they still refer to it as the senior center. Because when I say, I'll say, healthy, active, living center on my emails and whatever, and they're like, where is that? What the senior center, okay.
Okay, Councilwoman Gross.
Yeah, I just want to emphasize something that we kind of only, you've mentioned several times separately, but the substantial work that you all do around food is so important to so many people in our district. And it's so important to every council district, I think. So I just wanted to read out of the budget again, I'm on page two eighty-eight. Seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight meals at the Healthy Active Living Centers in 2019. And that's really important to know. I've been with discussions, even with food activists, with people who, you know, spend their days thinking about food scarcity, who didn't realize that. And that, I mean, it was like, it was amazing that, again, someone who's very concerned in wanting the city to do more around food justice and food scarcity and what can we do because people are hungry. And I said, well, you know, well, the first thing that we do that is the biggest expenditure are the meals at the senior centers, Healthy Active Living Centers, and that person didn't know that. So I just wanted to make sure that the people understand that this, five days a week generally, if not a weekend, five days a week.
Supported by the Area Agency on Aging, Allegheny County, they provide the meals for the program, so it's, it's an amazing thing.
And it's a robust distribution network.
Yes.
That we have these centers, maybe not as close as people would want them. Bluefoot still wants a center back, as I mentioned before. But really fairly conveniently located, accessible to seniors throughout the city, which is amazing. And then the other one is the summer program, which you also mentioned briefly, that on top of that, that a hundred and thirty thousand grub up free, free, again, no cost, summer meals and snacks were served to city youth at, I think you said eighty sites, and I added that in my notes as well. It's really impressive. And it really speaks to, I think, how you're out there and meeting the needs. I've began to do research and talk about gender-based budgeting, which some countries are doing. And as, as part of my work on the Gender Equity Commission, trying to get that commission to add capacity to advise us on the gendered and intersectional impact of the, these kinds of budget decisions that we make. And I think that's just a really perfect example. We know that we have a substantial percentage of our population that's needy, some thirty percent. And we also know that seventy percent of that population are female-headed households with children, right? So we're talking about children who are in need and have, we know concretely what are the needs that they have and how are we meeting those needs through our budgeting. So I just wanted to emphasize that and say thank you for all that you do. And again, your budget being only just over three million dollars, adding benefits being just close to four million dollars, you're doing a lot and I think many council people would love to see even more programming, so just putting that out there.
We're working on it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate that.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things real quickly. The spray parks, what's the life expectancy? I mean, so they're, how expensive are they, first of all? Can you, can you tell me that?
Well, I think, I, you'd have to talk to someone in the facilities, but I, I think the average spray park, if it's a pool conversion, was a pool, might have been closed during Act forty-seven or whatever, to reopen it and turn it into a spray park, maybe a million dollars. That's just.
So a million dollars. So obviously we have plumbing besides the features, you know, but.
So that's, that's everything.
It's really the plumbing, everything, it's all costs.
It's all costs.
How long are we, they expect it to last? Any ideas? I mean, plumbing underground, it could go fifty years, just like our plumbing, right?
I don't, I don't see that there's a real timeline as to, as to when they might become maintenance expensive or intensive. They're a little bit different in pools. There's zero depth, there's not, there's not all the hygiene, there's not the rigorous reporting that has to happen via Allegheny County. So provided that the infrastructure is pretty good, that's been in place and, and part of the build out of it, it could last, they could last for quite some time.
Yeah, we've got one in Beechfield, they, they love it. They really do. So, so we don't really know the life expectancy.
I don't, Councilman, I'm sorry, I don't.
The other thing is with, and I know we can't project where the new tax money is going to go, but I just wanted to give you a heads up. I'm planning an indoor arena with heated seats and brook line, all right? Because this money's just going to keep on coming, you know, providing I get my share. I'm joking, of course, but. And, and one, one last thing, Director, the PHDC moving into above us, is that in your purview? I know it's a city-owned building, but I know you were in on the talks.
Just had a couple of meetings yesterday and today and just left Chief, Chief Casey before I came here. It looks like the event will happen without a hitch tomorrow evening. We've worked it out to facilitate the whole of the center being open.
I wasn't even thinking that, but I'm glad you worked that out. I did get that call a couple of days ago.
So we, that's all fine. The whole center will be open. We have staff for the senior center, so people can look at the whole facility and not just the, the new space that Guillermo has. So, and I think it's expected that by Friday they'll be able to occupy the space. That's the conversation.
Ribbon cutting tomorrow.
Ribbon cutting tomorrow at five-thirty, that's my understanding. So I'll make an appearance there. But I worked, I worked with Guillermo a little bit yesterday. We met with him and.
Yeah, that's great. And that's going to be very welcoming in, in that neighborhood. I think we need some foot traffic and it'll provide that along with some other things. That's it for me. Anybody else? Councilwoman?
No, there's nobody.
Councilwoman Harris.
I forgot to ask you about the.
Andrew.
Did we, are we charging seniors for their dinners now?
Their lunches? No, ma'am, no. They could put something in the donation box, but they don't have to.
Okay, because, okay, because when we had Ms. Doozy, it was, like, it was a mandatory thing. I just wanted to make sure.
Donation, there's a box area. If they want to put something in the box, they can, but there's no requirement made to put anything.
Because we get money back.
We're funded by the county.
Right.
We don't get money back, but we're funded.
Yeah, and, and you know, that we follow, there's a, there's a lot of strict guidelines around the whole structure of the program. And, you know, Luann has quite a bit of work that she manages respective to that. But the, the contract stipulates how we manage that, but we do not charge for.
But we also have residents from the county that come to our senior centers also.
I, I, I don't, I would think.
No, I mean, I, I talked to them.
I just signed up. Remember the woman that came to visit from out of, we've signed her up. She was visiting her daughter in one of the come for visits for two weeks.
This has been always.
Ongoing, ongoing.
Excuse me, one second. I'm sorry. Are you to be a resident of the city to actually use the healthy?
I didn't think so. It's been ongoing where.
From the county, you have to be a resident of the county.
I just had a woman come in from out of.
No real strict rules on it. I think that's the way it should be, Director.
I think you sign up as a member. You, you log into a system and you. system, and you select what you want to do, what activities, do you want to eat.
You can come from Newcastle if you want, you know, and, and really, we want participation.
We're not gonna turn you away.
I know the Beachview Center, you know, we, we're looking for people, we're trying to encourage them to get out.
Absolutely.
Bill just said to me, we don't turn people away.
No.
No, I don't, I don't ever remember turning someone away and actually there-
And the age?
Really nice people that have been there for a while.
We're, we're trying to get them as young as me, actually.
I mean, I mean, the age to actually-
To maybe going, getting less than sixty.
Qualify?
I qualify.
Sixty, sixty years old? Ah, we're just kids, Deb. We've got a long time to wait.
We welcome anybody, and even those under sixty. You just may not be able to have the lunch that's provided by the-
I've snuck into a lot of places underage before, but never a Healthy Wellness Center.
Still my floor. I still have a floor here. Um, the, uh, seniors' money was, there was an incident that happened at one of the, uh, wasn't a senior center, it was a, uh, rec center, and they decided to take all the seniors' money and put it in one account.
Oh, yes, yes.
Where is that? I mean, is that anywhere?
Their money, their money goes back into, all the senior money goes into the senior trust fund. Their money's, right?
You're speaking about the advisory council.
Individually, individually.
Oh, no, they have their, they still have their advisory council money, that money is go to their advisory councils. Their permit money goes, when they have permit money-
But no, no, um, the money that they raise themselves.
So Lou just, Luanne just, um, yesterday was the annual senior advisory council orientation, where each center has its own advisory council members, there's a treasurer and a president. Some of them are ongoing members, sorry, I'm not talking into the microphone, some of them might be new members. So they get oriented and trained, and that event happened yesterday. They are kind of the fiscal agents of their own money, so every advisor-
So their money went back to them?
Yes, ma'am. They manage their own accounts.
Thank goodness, because I thought that was so unfair, this city, to take their money that they raised.
It's their money.
Not in their case.
They manage their own bank accounts, they do that, that's their money. We don't, they sign, go to the bank and do whatever they-
The permit money goes into the trust fund for them to use, but their advisory at their centers go to the centers, stays at their center.
Yes, because it, I mean, I don't, I do know how that happened, and it's, it's a shame that it did, but I'm glad it got back down to normal, because, you know, if they want something, they can write a check and get it.
That's right.
I mean- I'm sure like a great collective decision-making, I've seen the enthusiasm at the centers when they've been fundraising for something that they've decided that they're, you know, doing together. I mean, it's like fundraising for events and things like that.
Uh, they just had, recently had their big, they had, for the first time, they had this huge super bingo, uh, for all the centers. They had it at a restaurant, and, uh, it was so well-attended. They raised a lot of money. They raised enough money to pay for almost all their Christmas party this year by having that super bingo. They loved it. They really enjoyed themselves. I, actually, I think next year we have to find a bigger, um, restaurant to have this, um, bingo place for them. They really enjoyed themselves.
Yeah, and, I mean, it was their money, and when it started going, and that was wrong, but I'm glad you righted that wrong. Thank you very much. Okay, that's all I have.
Just one last thing. We have so much interest in multi-generational programming, and I know that you just said there's a lot of like rules and regulations and conditions that you have to do around the Healthy Active Living Centers, but there are these wonderful models that I keep, you know, noticing, and constituents keep bringing up to me about, for example, children's programming and senior programming, um, being interactive or being in the same place. I personally, and council, other council members may as well, I have a lot of retired people who are caregivers for their grandchildren, and so they can't go to the, they're like, I wish, I would love to go to Morningside, but I have my kid, I got my grandkids with me. So I almost feel like if there's some way programmatically that even once a week or once a month, it would, it's almost like a bring your kid to work day, but it's a bring, bring your, bring your care, you know, person dependent, um, with you to the lunch or something like that.
We've talked about trying to get programs like that, to get them on their monthly calendars and schedule something where they could do that.
Because, you know, they're like trying to figure out where the other reading times are. I know you have the reading times, but here are these, again, retirees, grandparents who are, you know, got the kids all day, and are really looking for an outlet to, you know, like we all do when we're giving, you know, taking care of kids. Where's the story time at the library, or where's the, you know, train table at the wherever place, yeah?
And we're not, right now we have our, um, at the Market House, we're advertising, we're doing our ceramics, we're getting that up and running, so we keep offering in the evening a ceramic program, classes, at the Market House. I say Market House, um, yeah, we've-
That's fun.
We just put that online, um, offering that program and some, um, also some craft, um, art program also, also in the evening, um, we're gonna do at the Market House now that we have it all remodeled, and the room's back up and running, and the kilns will be online shortly, so that's on.
Glad to hear it.
Do the ceramics have their own kiln?
Yeah, we have four kilns there. And they do that at Homewood as well. Homewood Senior Center has it. They have a great guy there who they do ceramics with.
We're gonna make you something for Christmas, huh?
I mean, teddy bear.
Yeah. Um, anybody else?
Good, thank you.
All good. Councilwoman Kell Smith, you're good. So we are going to, well, first of all, thank you, Director. Catherine, thank you, Lou.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Thank you, Bill, thank you for, you know, helping me through. Um, we are not adjourning. We are turning it over to Councilwoman Kell Smith.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your work.
Catherine, I'm so excited.
Oh, thank you so much. Oh, great. Okay, thank you so much.
Hey, I don't have to move a pillow from him when he sits, gets up. Well, certainly isn't mine. I got my own, I carry around with me.
Okay, wait, did we start? Wait, did we start? Is this still on, the camera on?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, camera's still on, we're still on.
Jeez, Anthony, get me in trouble. Director, you want to come up? Do you want to come up?
Cut that, David.
Yeah, one, two, two.
That's good. I got a clicker, you don't have to move it. I'm all ready to go, ma'am. I actually need the, you can probably skip over the one, so I'll read your mission.
And we'll continue with our, uh, City Council, Pittsburgh City Council budget hearings. Uh, I'm Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith, the Chair of the Department of Public Works, which, um, the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure falls under, and Environmental Services and some others, so we'll, we'll talk about that, uh, those budgets, but we're going to begin with our Director and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, and we'll have some words from our Budget Director, from City Council's Budget Director, opening statements, and then we'll hear from the Director and her staff, so.
Just a quick summary, uh, the, uh, the mission of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure is to provide physical mobility to support the social and economic mobility of the citizens of the city through the management, design, improvement, and operation of the public streets right of way. Um, the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure is responsible for all aspects of transportation and, and, uh, city-provided mobility services. DOMI is responsible for one thousand sixty lineal miles of streets, that's eight hundred and ninety miles of asphalt, ninety miles of concrete, eighty miles of brick and block stone, uh, two thousand four hundred and twenty-three lane miles of streets, two thousand of asphalt, uh, two hundred and six of concrete, one hundred and eighty-three of brick and block stone, six hundred and seventy-five sets of steps covering twenty-three point three lineal miles, forty-four thousand street lighting fixtures, eight hundred and fifty thousand street signs, and thirty-three miles of, uh, guide rail. Um, the budgetary, uh, changes today, total budget of, uh, DOMI, we'll use the acronym there, is, uh, eight million five hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. That's an increase of five hundred and seventy-three thousand, or seven percent, and a two-point four million dollar, thirty-nine percent increase from the twenty-eighteen budget. Uh, and this is due to some of the transition between, uh, taking responsibility from Public Works and moving it over to, uh, to this, uh, department. Uh, total full-time positions, ninety-seven, as well as funding for seasonal positions, an increase of two. Position and salary changes of note, there's an added senior manager right of way, uh, eighty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars, reduced to senior project managers from two to one, that's an eighty-five thousand dollar savings. Uh, reduced utility and right-of-way supervisors from two to one, seventy-five thousand dollar decrease. Uh, increased project managers from three to six, it's seventy-eight thousand five hundred and twenty dollars each. Increased project engineers from three to four, sixty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollar, um, increase. Uh, reduced staff engineer, uh, from six to five, uh, that's a savings of fifty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, reduced inspector twos from five to four, savings of forty-nine thousand, and an added senior systems analyst, uh, three, uh, increase of sixty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars. The eliminated draft technician two at forty-one thousand sixty dollars, eliminated traffic control foreman at fifty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars, added two senior planners, uh, sixty thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars each, and reduced principal planners from three to two, sixty-three thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Department of Mobility and Infrastructure's non-salary subclasses changed across eight lines for a total increase of twenty-five thousand dollars, or three and a half percent. Changes included tools, uh, increased by fifty thousand, operational supplies decreased by twenty, uh, administrative fees increased by twenty, um, machinery and equipment decreased by fifteen thousand dollars, transportation for employees decreased by seventy-two hundred dollars, regulatory increased by one thousand dollars, building systems decreased by, uh, one thousand dollars, and promotional, uh, decreased by one thousand dollars. DOMI has two grant-funded positions. The Hillman Foundation has funded a transportation fellow, uh, data, and, uh, the Heinz Foundation has funded a policy analyst. Uh, Department of Mobility and Infrastructure has no trust funds. However, the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure is responsible for a majority of our, uh, capital budget. Um, I have detailed here with the help of Mr. Strellick, uh, the, uh, major line items, uh, and I will go through those as quickly as possible. Um, Twenty-Eighth Street Bridge, which, uh, is part of the tip program, uh, advanced, uh, which, uh, total for twenty-twenty is gonna be, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, advanced transportation and congestion, uh, management technologies and development, uh, three point, approximately three, uh, point five million dollars, um, all from bond dollars, uh, bridge upgrades, uh, we will get a match on those, we'll spend two point four ourselves, one point eight for a total of about four point two million dollars. Uh, complete streets, uh, there's two hundred thousand in CDBG, uh, four point eight million in bond, one point two million in Pago, uh, matched by thirteen point five million dollars. Uh, total, uh, investment for complete streets will be nineteen million seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. Uh, design, construction, and inspection service, uh, two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars listed under other. Um, flex beam and fencing, fifty thousand dollars for bond dollars. Uh, flood control projects, seventy thousand dollars. Laramore Bridge, which is, uh, part of the tip program, will be forty thousand in bond, matched by seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars, for a total eight hundred thousand dollars for the Laramore Bridge project, this phase. Liberty Avenue, HSIP, fifty-five thousand dollars, uh, matched with, uh, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a total two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for Laramore Bridge. Uh, I'm sorry, that was for, uh, Liberty Avenue. Uh, Penn Avenue Reconstruction, Phase Two of that tip program, ten thousand dollars, uh, in bond, forty thousand in other for a total of fifty thousand dollars. Penn dot local share, um, tip is one million eighty-six thousand dollars of bond that we need to pay up. Uh, ramp and public sidewalks, two hundred thousand dollars in community development. Block grant funds, four hundred thousand in bond, for a total of six hundred thousand dollars dedicated towards the sidewalk and ramp program. Uh, slope field gear remediation, uh, two point one million dollars, that's all bond dollars. Uh, the next would be South Negley Avenue Bridge, uh, which is also part of the tip program, twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars of bond dollars, to be matched by five hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars for a total of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, South Side Signals, part of the tip program as well, two hundred thousand dollars in bond, matched by four hundred thousand dollars in, uh, other monies, for a total of five hundred thousand dollars. Step repair and replacement, five hundred and ninety thousand dollars, all bond funds, and then our favored street resurfacing, uh, sixteen thousand seventy-nine dollars, uh, which in bond funds and nine hundred and four thousand dollars in Pago, uh, operating funds, for a total of, uh, sixteen, sixteen million nine hundred and eighty-four thousand, close to seventeen million dollars, uh, for street resurfacing. Uh, Swindell Bridge, the, uh, also part of a tip program, uh, three hundred and forty thousand dollars in twenty-twenty in bond dollars, uh, matched by seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars for one point one million dollar total. Uh, West Ohio Street Bridge, three hundred and forty thousand nine hundred dollars in bond, uh, for, uh, for that project, uh, in twenty-twenty. Uh, also, there's projects that aren't funded in twenty-twenty but are included, because we do vote on a six-year plan, uh, in the twenty-eight, twenty-one through, uh, twenty-twenty-five capital improvement plan. Uh, those include the Bus Rapid Transit, um, the, uh, CDBG signals upgrade, which is ongoing, the Charles Anderson Bridge Tip, the Mon Oakland Connector and Four Mile Run, um, trail development, uh, projects throughout the, uh, rest of the plan. I don't believe there's any in, uh, two thousand and twenty, but this would be for twenty-twenty-one on. Smithfield Street, uh, part of a tip program as well, too, will be included, uh, in twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-five, as will the, uh, Swinburne Bridge, uh, through, uh, twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-four. Um, just to mention as well, too, there is a bunch, well, over a hundred, uh, deliverables attached, I think a hundred and twenty or a hundred and thirty deliverables attached. Uh, instead of listing all those and speaking through those, I figured you'd, uh, be able to, uh, know most of the ones that you need to speak about. They are also listed in the capital budget as well, too, so for folks at home and for my members, if they, uh, need to reference a specific deliverable, look at the, the larger, uh, section here, and, uh, most likely we will find it in that line item. And, uh, with that, we'll-
Director, turn around to the seat.
Thank you, Bill. So if you'll indulge me, I have a PowerPoint presentation.
Could you both introduce yourselves to the public, and then, and then we'll go to your presentation.
I'm, uh, I'm Corinne Ericks. I'm the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure.
Eric Satchler, I'm Chief Engineer for the department.
Great. So, um, I do have a slide, one for each one of those deliverables, so it's just a hundred and twenty-three slides that we can go through.
Let's not.
I'm, I'm just kidding.
But that, but will this be available for the public online, so if they wanted to see it?
Yeah, this, this presentation will be, and as, as I mentioned, uh, the capital budget currently is online, the twenty-twenty proposal, and folks can see it.
Well, can I ask if any of those deliverables are in any of our districts that you know of in particular?
Yes, they are. They're in every district of the city.
Well, let's go to my district and see what's going on. Can you do that?
Let the Director do her presentation.
Okay, that's fine.
And we are joined by Councilwoman Gross and Councilwoman Kell Smith.
I gotta turn this a little bit, okay? Can I do this?
Director, please do your presentation.
Um, no, no, thank you, and, and appreciate it. The, um, this is just the second, uh, the second budget year, um, that the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, uh, will exist. We were, of course, established by an action of council in twenty-seventeen. Twenty-eighteen was our full, uh, first full budget, uh, the, the year that we're currently in is our second, and then twenty-twenty will be the beginning of our third. So, um, we have a relatively small staff, but they get a lot done, um, with our ninety-seven, um, staff members. As, uh, Bill mentioned, the, the mission of the department is to provide the physical mobility necessary to support the social and economic mobility of the people of Pittsburgh, and, uh, we really do believe this. We know that the ability of people to, to move between their homes and places of employment, homes and jobs and schools and, and grocery stores, um, is absolutely critical to the health and wellness of our city. Um, transportation also, as you know, is a major contributing factor to, uh, environmental, um, concerns, including, uh, climate change and, and stormwater runoff. So, um, we take our mission very seriously, um, and endeavor to, to do the best that we can by the people of Pittsburgh. Um, we're driven by five goals that we try and come back to on a routine basis in every project that we do. Um, first and foremost, that no one dies or is seriously injured traveling on city streets. Um, we, we- We, we have a ways to go in this, as we've seen, that we've had some pedestrian and bicycle crashes and some fatalities even, even recently. But we endeavor to, to improve as much as we can the safety of the traveling public. And we measure this by, by thinking about, are our streets and intersections intuitive to use even by an adolescent child? Would we allow a school-aged child to navigate our streets going to middle school? Because if they can do it, we believe that our, our older adults can do it, our persons with disabilities can do it, and every resident of our city can do it. We seek to make sure that every resident can access fresh fruits and vegetables within twenty minutes' travel of home, and that they don't need a private automobile to do that. We want them to be able to get to groceries and get home before their ice cream melts, and that this is something that every resident of our city should be able to enjoy. That, that all trips less than one mile are easy and enjoyable to achieve by non-vehicle travel. You might be surprised to learn that forty percent of the trips taken in the city of Pittsburgh, forty percent of the vehicle trips that are taken in the city are less than one mile. So we, if we can achieve this, we can reduce traffic congestion by forty percent, something I think that all of us would see value in. And then, and then finally, housing and transportation are two of the largest household costs to our residents. And, and for some communities, actually, transportation, the cost of transportation exceeds the cost of housing. And this is particularly true among those with fixed incomes, those that are, that are in the lower income ranks of our, of our city. And so we do strive to make sure that no household in our city needs to spend more than forty-five percent of their income on housing, transportation, and, and energy. And we do know that as housing costs rise, it may be a heavier and heavier burden on, on our department to ensure that transportation costs can decrease, so that we can offset those, those increases in housing costs. And finally, that our streets reflect the values and pride of our city. Our streets make up about one-fifth of the land area of our city, and it's where our visitors really are left with their indelible memory. So the, the documentary or the movie on Mr. Rogers is coming out this week, and, and you know, do our streets tell the story of Mr. Rogers, or tell the, the, the character that our city is? And so these are some of the things that my staff comes back to time and time again as we approach our projects and think about, what can we do to make this city better? Just some highlights, and, and both looking back and looking forward over the past year, we, street resurfacing is a, is a big activity, is something that touches every district of the city. We've, in coordination with the public utilities, who also do a fair amount of, of utility paving and restoration and altold. This year, we've paved over sixty lane miles of streets. This is a, a high watermark in recent years for the city. And so I'm happy to, to see that. Along with that, when we've had that re, street resurfacing, we do need to bring our curb ramps up to current code, and so we've rebuilt over eighteen hundred curb ramps this year as well, as part of the street resurfacing program. Concrete, brick and block stone, we've made a major investment in restoring our historic roadways. The, the list is there, I won't go through all of them, that we have worked on throughout the city. Grant Street was perhaps our largest brick and block stone project that we took on this year. There's more work to do in future years on Grant Street, but you no longer will lose a filling driving on the segment of, of Grant Street between St. Seventh and Liberty Avenue. Bridge repair is, is a large budget item for us, and we are responsible for a hundred and eighty bridges of the four hundred that are here in the city. We've had significant issues with some of our bridges this year, where we've seen concrete falling from beneath them, we've seen other issues of concern. And so we've made a major investment in, in 2019, and we've invested one point four million dollars in just bridge maintenance. So this is not full bridge replacement or rehabilitation, but just in bridge repair, one point four million. Next year, we'll, we'll add a million dollars more to that and do two point four million in critical bridge repair. In addition to that, we are underway in, in adding to the major bridge project. So McFerran Street Bridge is already underway, Duck Hollow Bridge is under construction, Lowry will see major improvements next year, Twenty-Eighth Street Bridge, Cartel Roadway Bridge, California Street Bridge. And then in just the design phase, which is a, which is a, is a big lift for the department, two significant bridges, Charles Anderson Bridge and Swinburne Bridge, are both in the design phases for future investment. And so this is tens of millions of dollars of bridge improvement, much of it coming, and with much gratitude from the state and federal resources to support a bridge project. A new, after twenty-one years in the works, a new West Ohio Street Bridge will start construction next year, so that's a six and a half million dollar project in, in the Councilwoman's District there. We also are responsible for, the, the numbers vary, but between six and eight hundred sets of public steps in the city. So Janila is one of the, the sets of steps that we're proud of to have accomplished this year, and as you can see, it's, it's a beautiful set of steps, yeah. Huge difference, and so, and, and really a big difference in quality of life for these residents that now do that. We, we know that there is a huge backlog of steps that, that need improvement in, in all of your districts that are here. And so we're going to continue to chip away on that and try and make improvements in the steps in the coming year or two. Large projects that will undertake, the Vista Street Steps and the Fraser Street Steps, among others, that will undertake this year. We're still...
Vista?
Vista. Oh, sorry. Thank you. We are a city of fragile soils, so we do see a significant amount of slide movement. This is something that we, we had a record number of landslides in 2018 that we're still working our way out of even while new slide events continue to occur in the city. Diana Street is just one example of, of several that we have completed this year, so a street that was impassable, as it had dropped so significantly, is now restored as a full street. Again, a long list of, of slide mitigation that we're working on, list is underway. Ivy Glen has been addressed. Parkwood and Ead Street has continuing work that's needed on there. Ford Avenue Commercial Street will be underway in the coming months. A long list of continued work that we'll, we will address. In addition to bridges and stairs, we have a number of structural sidewalks and other structural elements in the city. Mount Washington, perhaps, you know, the, the signature one among them, where we've made investments in repairing the structural sidewalk on Mount Washington. We'll continue that work, addressing the overlooks and other deferred maintenance, a number of retaining walls, guide rail and fencing throughout the city is part of the work that we do. Flood and stormwater management, again, a critical issue in many of your communities. And so we continue work on streets run, some cleanup work and additional design work on sawmill run, four-mile run, in partnership with the PWSA. Red Oak and Hason has seen some work, Mooney Road, Gladstone, Videli, and others that we're continuing to address through the, the flood project. This year, we have a new project that we've, that we've begun, which is really addressing some of the critical sidewalk gaps. Sidewalks are the fundamental building block of everything else in our city, and many of our communities that are most in need actually lack quality connected and accessible sidewalks. And so we've begun a sidewalk gap program in Homewood and the Hill District, and then we're looking to expand that into the Hazelwood neighborhood as a starting point. There's lots of work to do there. Just some more signature initiatives to point out in partnership with, with PennDOT. You can now go and see the sort of reimagined Forbes Avenue, which has really transformed that community with new signals, new bicycle accommodations, better line striping and better operations in the section through Oakland. Fast on the heels of that, the city has done a tremendous amount of work on East Carson Street with new streetlights that are on East Carson Street. PennDOT will follow that with about a fourteen million dollar investment in new signals and pedestrian safety improvements on East Carson Street, and that should begin in the spring. Broadway Avenue is a project that we continue to work on, so we've made some improvements in that community for pedestrian safety and place making. New public art will be installed soon, and then we're continuing work on Public Plaza and some other enhancements to really address the, the beachview community improvements. Lenzel Carnahan is a, is a project that has been long under design. We'll finally begin construction in the coming year so that we can improve some of the safety and operational improvements on that. Critical Regional Corridor, Allegheny Circle, will be converted from a one-way urban renewal rotary in that community to a two-way community main street. So that will be, again, a, a project that's been under design and development for about three years, will finally come to fruition in the coming year. Smallman Street, sort of, I didn't mean to have one for each of you, but I guess I do. I did not, I didn't. So Smallman Street, again, a major investment that's happening in the Strip District.
Remember who chairs, so I should have to.
And so that, we're seeing reinvestment in the Produce Terminal Building, and we'll complement that with significant streetscape investments and the creation of a signature plaza on this corridor as well. In partnership with the Port Authority of Allegheny County, a major investment for the city and the county is the Bus Rapid Transit Corridor. That will not go into construction in this coming year, but we will continue the design and permitting and incremental improvement of transit services between these major destination areas. Just some compliments to, I, I have an incredible team, you all, you all know. Many of them are in our sign and signal shops and in the paving division, and they're, they're out there every day doing tremendous work. Four hundred miles of line striping has gone down this past year, thirty-five hundred waterborne crosswalks were painted, four hundred thermoplastic crosswalks, our first year with our thermoplastic machine, and they've been really pushing them out. Twenty-five hundred stop bars, two thousand signs installed and twenty-seven hundred signs repaired. So if you, if you see one of our sign and paint specialists, you know, tell them thank you, they do great work every day out on the street. This was the first year that we've really been able to put in the ground traffic calming, and so we have a number of, of communities that now have traffic calming of various types, so, see, something for you again.
I don't want to say...
Traffic, traffic calming is not all speed humps, I'm obliged to say. It also includes pedestrian refuge islands, lane modifications. Speed humps are one, one tool, but we really strive to use the, the right tool in the right place for what the community outcomes are. But we have had now nearly a dozen places in the community that now, we hope, are experiencing a higher quality of life as we've been able to slow some of the travel speeds and increase safety in their communities. A number of complete streets that we're also pursuing, which include road diets and slow streets, business districts, again, Broad Street, South Side, Neighborhood Street on Muriel, Chateau Street Road Diet will, will go underway in the coming year. Willow and Hatfield, Lawrenceville Neighbor Way is a slow street also next year, we'll go there. We've done intersection improvements and crossing improvements. This is in the Lincoln Lemington Community, but throughout the city as well. Millerton at Thirty-Five, Penn at Sheridan, Fifth and Bella Field in partnership with the University of Pittsburgh, Woodward and Merrimack, Davidson and Fortieth. You know, and some of these, I will say, are, you know, we're, we're, we're really trying things boldly to improve them, but, and making adjustments as we need to with the community. Again, signal maintenance, sure.
Crashions, Woodruff and Merritt.
Wood, oh, I'm sorry, Woodruff and Merritt.
I just wanted to make sure people understand.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. We'll correct that before it goes out.
You have a hundred and some pages, I get it.
So, signal maintenance, you know, we, we are grateful that we were able to add additional traffic control electricians in the 2019 budget. We are now able to run three crews for, for keeping our traffic signals up and running. We have six hundred and sixty signalized intersections across the city, and all of them require tweaking at one time or another. This past year, we had eighty-eight signal retiming, seven signal revisions. In addition, this group looks after the Washington Boulevard floodgates and many, many different kinds of service calls and improvements that are needed, knockdowns, crashes that occur. We've installed a number of signals, there's more yet to go from the 2019 budget, that we do have a long lead time on some of the signal pools, so they, some of them are trickling over into 2020 for the, the actual install of the signal improvements. We talked earlier about the ATC MTD project. This is an, this is a tremendous project to address a hundred and twenty-three signals across five corridors of the city, to really bring them into the, the, the leading state-of-the-art smart signal, both for, to facilitate the movement of vehicles through our city, but also to provide for pedestrian and bicycle safety and movement in the smartest system in the country. It will be undergoing design this year and, and construction in 2021. A number of streetlight projects that we have across the city, so we've completed some, some streetlight improvements on Highland Avenue, working now on Walnut Street, looking at LED, street lighting upgrades, and, and other ways to enhance street lighting in the city. We launched our Safe Driving Pledge, so still encourage folks to sign up for this, to do their part to help manage traffic speeds in the city and improve safety for everyone. This is really a community-driven effort to help manage traffic speeds and preserve safety. We, in March of this year, we launched the Mayor's Executive Order on Autonomous Vehicle Testing in the city, and, and with that, put forward the Ten Pittsburgh Principles that we've been now really pushing and working with the AV testers in our city to promote outcomes that benefit community objectives and community-driven priorities that we have here in the city. We're finalizing the, the Bike Plan, the city's Bike Master Plan for a ten-year Bike Plan, and we'll follow on with a series of different implementation of that plan in the coming years for an All Ages and All Abilities Network. We're working on a fifty-year Transportation and Mobility Vision Plan, so that we really can put together a strategic program of investments. Transportation projects take a very long time, but we need to know what we want to do before we can actually get the projects underway. And so finally, we'll put together a strategic plan that can help guide us as a city that believes very fervently that we are growing and will grow, and we need to accommodate those new movements in a way that does not compromise community quality of life or the ability to thrive for the residents that we have today. Doing a number of planning exercises, putting out Complete Streets Design Guidelines, working in the different areas of the Strip, the Hill District and Oakland, on area parking management studies and mobility studies with the community to get those in order. We'll begin a new Safe Routes to School Program this year, and so working with a selection of schools in the area to make sure that our students can, can get to their destination safely and, and help push education and enforcement interventions there for the student. We do know that there's a range of new mobility types that are coming out throughout the country, and they will be coming to Pittsburgh. So really looking at the new policies that we need to put in place to know where these new mobility types need to go in our streets, and that we're able to proactively handle them so that we're not put in a reactive position. We've done a lot of work on improving our right-of-way permitting process, so again, a shout-out to the staff at the permit office, who so far to date have processed over twenty-two thousand permits for different activities in the public right-of-way, many of them street openings, utilities, development projects. Again, we expect to see more in the future. Those have yielded two point five million dollars in revenue, and we've had, now advanced about sixty violations, so that we can really get those who are using and impacting our public rights-of-way to restore them to the proper quality at the proper time that we expect. We're going to an online system in 2020, together with our fellow departments at the permits licensing and inspection and the zoning, so that will make it much more convenient for users, and also provide much, much better data for us to manage and enforce the use of our public rights-of-way. And the two positions... users and also provide much better data for us to manage and enforce the use of our public rights-of-way. And the two positions that were mentioned that will be added, will be added expressly to assist with our development review capability. So, we are seeing more development in the city. That's a good thing, but we're seeing increased impatience among the developers at the pace that it takes for us to review their traffic impact statements and review their right-of-way plans for restoration of the public right-of-way. So those two positions will allow us to stay on top of the development proposals and make sure that they are restoring our city streets. We have a great team. We're small but scrappy and they get a lot done together and with partners across the different departments of the city and our partners across the county and the state. And so we're really happy to have them. They're people that need to pull together because we really just never know what's going to be thrown at us and so feel it's, you have to have the obligatory bus in a whole picture at this point. So, happy for the support that we've gotten from City Council. We've got a lot more work to do in the future and we're eager to do it.
Thank you so much. And Councilwoman Bruce, you had some comments?
Thank you, thank you. I'm happy to go.
Can I also say we're also joined by Council President Kraus?
I'm all spread out, Bruce.
You're fine, no, don't.
So I just want to thank, firstly, for all of the fine work that you've been doing throughout my district especially. We were very happy to be some of the early adopters in the traffic calming on both the speed humps in Melwood and Bloomfield on Edmund Street, and I think I saw the construction crews out today on Heberton.
Yes, they were.
Yes, so we're very excited. It has been years. And just last night I was meeting with the kind of bike ped volunteers who are, represent many of the neighborhoods I represent and they were going through lists and of traffic calming and changes that used to all be turned down. In fact, I have a famous spreadsheet that I emailed the director within like her first days of being in the city where I went back three, I went all the way back to 2014, to the beginning of my term, and I had kept track of all the requests because there are just so many from my district. It was about a hundred, a hundred-line spreadsheet of requests that had been turned down. Can I have a bump out here? Can we have a stop sign there? Can we have a crosswalk? Could you fix the striping? And there wasn't capacity, really. As before we created Dumi, I used to say, there isn't the right door to knock on to get to a yes. We were not staffed and resourced for the amount of demand. So let alone, aside from major development projects and the permitting and all the utility work, this was just coming from residents, like residential constituents. So I really appreciate that because you've made nice work of that list. I went back three years deep and a lot of those things got installed and it was like, it was like Christmas had happened. Suddenly the constituents were like, oh my gosh, there's stop signs. We've been asking for this for years and they just magically occurred. So adding the capacity was really an important part of, I think, Mayor Perdido's vision and Council spending the resources for this new department and Director Rex, who's done a fantastic job with a lot of pent-up demand. I want to emphasize, I feel like every year at budget hearings I talk about when someone brings up, like you just did at the end of the slideshow, major developments, usually it's in the context of the PLI budget hearing and I say, we've had so many, a multi, I mean, I don't know what the multiplier that we're up to is. I want to say it was a 500% increase in permits in PLI and so it's major developments, but then also like individual people fixing up their homes. And similarly, when we're talking about Domi, it's major developments, but then it's even an individual home wanting a curb cut. One of the things that actually is, there are so many new ones in my district that now they become a problem.
Yes.
Because you're turning all sidewalks into driveways that weren't driveways and so you're really taking away pedestrian safety and pedestrian space as well as parking space, which is a really tough issue in a historic district. So there's just many, many levels of things that we just weren't facing ten years ago in the city. That demand for regulation, for permitting, wasn't there for the, you know, policymaking, the analysis and the impact and all of that kind of stuff. So thank you for really having a very nice handle on all of it. I know that I have, there's, you're obviously doing a lot. I think some of the things that are most recently on our minds that we bring up every year are around utility coordination and that is now in your purview. And again, before Domi existed and because we just had been coming off of decades of really not having the demand, we really didn't have the capacity. And so we gave our utilities kind of just like open season permits. Do whatever you want, whenever you need, and we barely even knew about it. And that's just not good enough anymore, especially as we're kind of rebuilding. It's not maintenance at this point. We're rebuilding infrastructure and all of our utilities underground are a hundred years old, really. So the gas lines are a hundred years old and you don't want your gas lines not to be replaced, right? You really need them to be replaced. Obviously, our water and sewer lines are a hundred years old and so there's both the burden and the opportunity to coordinate that reconstruction at the same time that we have all of the changing needs at surface level and changing populations and destinations with demographic change, as you mentioned. People, I used to say, again, before Domi's created, in my district, because we have new and population turnover, there are just new destinations. And so that's why some, you know, people want to change on their neighborhood streets. Well, the church that used to be there isn't there anymore or the school isn't there anymore. Now there's a new school or there's shops on the main street that weren't there twenty years ago and now it's, you know, a main street that's reborn and so now people have different demands and that's the department where they're able to go to for these selections. There's almost too many things to talk about for a very long double-budget hearing here. But, so let me just focus mostly, I think, on making a plug to my colleagues who don't necessarily have the same demands as my district does, which is, think about when we talk about our kind of budgeting as a moral document and think about when we talk about budgeting for needs, the beginning of Director Rex's presentation where she's saying, you know, it's our obligation and our duty to really make sure people can get to the things that they need on a daily basis. And Councilwoman Kalkil likes to make fun of me when I caught them off the cuff one day here, car disadvantaged people, and he was like, you just made that up. What is that? And I said, no, a significant portion of our constituents as city and certainly my constituents, both old and young, and people have been in my district for four generations who never had a driver's license or never bought a car, family households who don't have cars, live in the neighborhoods I represent because they don't need a car, because there's great bus service, because there's main streets, because they can get to church, they can get to Bingo every night of the week because there's bus routes. And I'm serious, I had a neighbor who went to Bingo every single night and because there's childcare and there's schools and there are destinations and it's important that we help them get there without a car. And I always like to bring up that if we're talking about budgeting to help our needier parts of our population, then those we know also are seventy percent of our neediest households are female-headed households with children. So this way to get to school, to get to, get food, I mean, you have a family to feed at home, there's a lot more demands for logistics for your household and that we help them to get there. So I am wholeheartedly in favor of the kind of complete streets funding that I see here by the kind of not just paving, but all the other parts of the infrastructure improvements that we need to do. And it's not just about the thirty-five-year-old white guy who has a bicycle. It's not just about the, you know, privileged constituent who has preferences. It is also about people who are trying to get needs and we, it's not our job to make their life harder. I think it's our obligation to make their life easier on a daily basis. That's my soapbox for the afternoon. It's been a long day, I'm going to stop there.
I'm not sure about that. There's probably a second wind coming.
It's like my fifteenth soapbox for this day. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kalkil.
Okay. Now, I'll just go through some of these things quickly. I know you're an avid bike rider because I see you.
Yes, I am. And I'm not thirty-five, sorry.
You're much younger than that, we know that. So, Director Rex, you know, I've been saying, I think throughout the South Hills, it's kind of like, you know, they kind of oppose bike lanes when we were doing, whether it be the Broadway Avenue or Brookline Project, and I kind of got the reputation as not liking bike lanes and that's not the case for me. You know, I do know that when bike lanes on our business districts, I just think with the rails there, it's a lot of danger there. But I'm going to throw a challenge out to you, okay? If I can get a bike from Brookline to downtown Pittsburgh, and I don't know if you've ever tried that, but it's very difficult.
He can't even get his car down here.
I know, I know. Yeah, you see, it's all banged up, you're right. But I've talked to Catherine Kellerman about this, I've talked to Rich Fitzgerald about this. There's only one real way, I feel, and I'm not an engineer, Eric, so you know, take it for what it's worth, but it's through that Wabash Tunnel. If you can get a bike lane through that Wabash Tunnel, you open up everything. All the way to Bethel Park to Cannonsburg, people can ride a bike. It's Route Fifty-One. It's, you can't cross, I mean, it's just too dangerous. But Wabash Tunnel, as you probably know, there's a ramp that goes off to the left into a warehouse right below Brasher High School and it takes you right over there and nobody even uses that ramp. So, and the Wabash Tunnel, I don't think many people use the Wabash Tunnel either, to tell you the truth. Oh, do you?
So, that's in my district, so I'm going to say a lot about that.
Well, I'm not saying close it to cars and open it to bikes. I think it's big enough because it's only one way in, one way out. I think it's big enough for a car and a bike lane, possibly. I know that's owned by the Port Authority though and that's a problem, I guess.
Yeah, I'm going to come up with something for his district now.
And I think they're more, you know, about liability than anything with dealing with the Port Authority, why they probably won't even entertain that at this point. But I feel if you can get that Wabash Tunnel, that's only, what, three-tenths of a mile, if you get a bike lane through there, you'll see me supportive of bike lanes throughout my district, believe it or not, okay? Because that's the challenge. If, just a matter of putting a bike lane up and down Broadway Avenue and you're just going to Dormont and turning around and coming back, they want a destination, destination is downtown for them, you know? And if they can ride their bike downtown and, you know, go to work actually doing that, that would be fantastic. But I just feel like somebody will get killed crossing Fifty-One. I don't even know how you would do that. You'd either have to build a bridge or go through the Wabash Tunnel. That's just my thoughts on it, you know, and I just want to clarify that, so.
I don't think you better respond, that's my district, so I'll just say that. And I still do chair the committee.
We won't respond except to say, this is recorded, so that's, I'm grateful for that.
Yeah, I'm grateful too because I can't wait to show it to the residents of Mount Washington, including his committee man who's going to have a fit.
No, we appreciate that and, you know, with some of these emerging types of mobility, I do bike, but I do have an e-bike and it makes a world of difference to be able to get up and down some of the topography that we have here in the city. And as these modes become more available and affordable, I do think that we will see more residents avail themselves of that. We are in a very fortunate time right now where I think we have sort of unprecedented levels of collaboration going on between the city, the Port Authority, the county, as we progress on the Bus Rapid Transit Project, as we progress on some of the other priorities. There will of course be a process before any kind of decision like that was to be made. But the more connections that we can lend, the more ways that we can make this a possibility because modes of travel such as bicycling are extremely affordable. And again, that's an important consideration for some of our residents who really, you know, struggle, you know, even to have a hundred-dollar a month, you know, bus fare to be able to bike for ten dollars a month would make a huge difference for many of them.
Yeah, I just wanted to be on record in saying I'd like to put a bike lane in Councilwoman Gelsmith's district.
Okay.
I do have a hammer in my hand.
The Wenzel Carnahan project you referred to, that's on, that's on my side, right? I know it's in your district, but it's on Wenzel Carnahan, that's at the bottom.
It's both.
And that's adding a turning lane, that's a...
Yours starts right past the steps.
No, no, yeah, right, right. No, I know it's your district, but then those steps are, we're going to get those steps out of there.
We're going to get those steps improved as well.
When is that project going to go?
The road construction project is scheduled to start December eleventh.
Wow.
And they're going, the first thing they're going to work on is replacing the bridge on Carnahan.
That's Carnahan, yeah, right, okay.
So that's going to start, the rest will be, will follow.
Okay, but there will be a continuous and pour over to the other side of the road and those steps they jet out, you could see those steps, they got scrapes all over them, people, you know, hit those all the time, so that's welcome. You know, I was looking forward to that. I'm glad, that was talked about ten years ago, I think, originally, and I guess when I slated it, but, but no, I'm glad. So that project is moving and it's going to be continuous, they're going to do Carnahan side and then come over the other side and done. That's great, that's great. Now, the striping up in Broadway, on Broadway, okay? I'm getting calls like weekly, people slipping on the new tape, you know, the taping, you know, the crosswalks. And I talked to Amanda about, was it Amanda?
Yeah, Amanda.
I talked to Amanda about it, she said that you all were looking into some sort of, you know, coarse type of sandpaper, type of, something that we put on that where people don't fall. I don't have a problem with it, I've crossed it many times, but maybe it's my shoes, I don't know, you know, but I do get a lot of calls that people are slipping on that.
On which?
The taping, you know.
The new painting, yeah.
I don't know.
That's up there.
It's some taping, so. So, and back to Broadway, you know, and we talked about this. And first of all, I want to say...
I think we want to put a bike lane down there because it's partly my district too.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yes. Okay, so I do want to say, Karina, you know, I've had nothing but good experiences with your department. You know, when there's an issue, you're on it or Eric's on it or Amanda's on it or Michael, the engineer, Michael?
He's the engineer on this project, yeah.
Yeah, he's the engineer. Oh, he's the engineer on that project, okay. So my question is, remember we put the flex poles there and I had to call you, I said, you know, people were like screaming at me. I was up there with Michael and Amanda and we were at a corner and I said, and you could just see it, people were like, get rid of these things, you know, they're coming by and they're screaming and yelling and it was because, of course, it's for safety, but it actually made it less safe because of the positioning of these poles. And that has me frightened for when we put in our permanent ballards, when we put our permanent concrete ballards in. Those are just temporary, the flex poles, we know.
Yeah.
Now, we're putting the permanent ones in, but even now, they came up and made some changes for me, which I'm grateful for, but even now, they're just still so tight, like I feel like we took a safe-driving thing. I do believe it's safer for pedestrians across at the T-stations, but, you know, cars now have to go out into the oncoming traffic and it's like, ah, I feel like we made it less safe than, in trying to make it more safe, believe it or not. And you did take some poles away and it made it better, but it's still, people are banging them and, you know, it's just like, I just want to make sure when the ballards come and we position them, I'd like to be there and be like, okay, this one's going here, this one's going there, you know? And just, I'm not an engineer, again, and I know they probably go by some specs as to where they should be positioned, but it just didn't make any sense to me at all. I was like so frustrated because my phone is ringing off the hook, people are saying, you responsible for this? Like, no, I'm trying to get rid of them. So, anyway, they've got a picture of me backing up over one, you know, so they've really become like, the adjustments you made are good enough for now until we do something permanent, I'll say that. But I'm frightened as to where the ballards are going to go because they're going to be permanent. And I know we got some beautiful artwork that we were all agreed on and that's all great and that projects, it's going to be beautiful, it really is, and that neighborhood's going to change and it is changing as we speak, so. So I just want to make sure we get that right. I'm just afraid, I guess, to put ballards where people are going to be scraping into them and banging into them again, but...
Right. So you make a couple of great points just to raise. One is that we do, for the traffic calming projects, for projects like Broadway, for some projects that we've had with pedestrian crossing islands, you know, we do collect data before and after and we do, you know, part of the reason why we do the flex posts is so that we can make those adjustments. And there still are some tweaks that we need to make on the Broadway project, so some things that we're seeing out there that we're going to need to adjust, some line striping, maybe still some more of the flex post before we go with the permanent ones. And so that really does let us, you know, try before we buy, so that is a great thing. One other change that will happen in the coming year, actually is, we're gearing up to do it now, is that we had... gearing up to do it now, um, is that we, uh, had previously, um, the DPW Construction Division, what, we, we relied exclusively on, um, the Construction Division to, um, install and change and modify the flex posts, and they're, they're a wonderful division, and also, um, you know, very, stretched very thin, um, and so that, that did lead to some time delays in making the adjustments in the way, um, uh, that we may have wanted, and so we are training our own, um, sign and paint maintenance specialists now to also, as, so that we have some redundancy and resiliency.
So, we can do it in-house now?
Well, we, we always did it in-house, it was just that, uh, it was, uh, we relied on our, on our, um, sister department, um, to, to factor our work into the flow that was already coming, um, at them, and this will allow us to have a little bit more control over the timeline.
So, you will have control over who, who goes out there and when they go out there, because it's coming from your department, much easier, absolutely.
So, well, hopefully we can still lean on them, because, because, uh, you know, our, our folks are still gonna need to paint the, the lines and saying that, hang the signs and all of that, but they will also have, be cross-trained, so that we can have some, um, kinds of, uh, redundancy in the system to be able to respond more quickly, because there was a time lag, um, in adjusting those.
And that's not gonna, that's not gonna happen, I think, until spring, as far as the painting and, you know, the, the permanent ballards, but, um, I just wanna make sure that I'm like there, and I see, like, where these ballards are gonna go, I just, you know? Uh, the other thing, side, the sidewalk gap, uh, you were talking about, that's only on city properties, that's not private properties.
So, there are, the, this was a grant that we received from, so this is not city money, it's a grant that we received from PennDOT, um, in order to address, so these were in, um, uh, uh, communities that are CDBG eligible, they're communities that have, um, lower levels of, uh, home ownership, more absentee property owners, more transit dependency, less car ownership, so they're communities that really rely on the ability to, uh, to walk. In some instances, they're places where sidewalks have never been.
Yep.
They were never constructed to, to begin with, um, but it's really, uh, imperative for these communities to be able to have this, this completed, um, sidewalk network, and so, uh, a significant number of the sidewalks are on city properties, and so, or URA, or other publicly owned, because we also have higher rates, um...
But not limited to that, if you decide, it's best for the...
But it's not limited to that, if we, if there is one property that, you know, is, is, is there in the middle of the block, which means that a person in a wheelchair would not be able to travel from one end of the block to another, um, in those places where we've identified these critical gaps, then we are going ahead.
Now, if that's private property, do you have to get permission from the homeowner, or are we allowed to just come in there and put a sidewalk?
So, we're working with law, this is a new program, and so we're still working out, um, some of these aspects to it, we, we would give notice, um, because it, it is in the right-of-way, so we're not doing anything that is beyond the right-of-way, these are all, um, sidewalk improvements that are in the right-of-way of the street, um, not on private property itself, uh, but adjacent to privately held properties, um, and so, yeah.
And I wouldn't think there would be much of an objection if you're putting a new sidewalk in front of some, somebody's home, but other than the neighbor saying, why are they getting a new sidewalk and I'm not?
Well, there's, there's that also, but again, these were, you know, somewhat surgically selected because, based on the demographics of the communities and their need, but, there, there may be some obje- objections to putting in the sidewalk, but this is something that, for the safety of the public, um, and, and this is the first year, so, and because it was a grant, uh, funded program, um, I think it will again give us information about how we can continue to improve our sidewalk network throughout the city.
Sure, and you said we have a hundred and eighty bridges we have to maintain?
I think that's the, is that our exact number?
It, it's approximate, yeah, that includes, uh, it will, once we get it rebuilt.
Then it'll be a hundred and eighty-one bridges.
So, I haven't priced bridges lately, but I know bridges are expensive, right? I mean, whether it's stopping, just stopping the traffic, I mean, alone, right? So, uh, most of that is state grant money, is that how we pay for that?
Bridges over twenty feet in length are part of the, the National, you know, Bridge Inspection Program, I think those are eligible for the matches where it's ninety-five percent, eighty percent federal, fifteen percent state, we contribute five percent. There are some small projects that we tackle with our own money.
But...
I'm glad to hear that, yeah.
There is not enough of the state money either.
Sure, right, right, sure, sure.
So, we still, that is, we need to compete with, throughout the state and with communities across it, in order to get those resources, um, to do it.
Does your department actually inspect the bridges?
So, the bigger bridges over twenty feet, um, PennDOT handles it for us.
We're talking twenty feet?
Twenty feet in length, along, along the, the driving direction, um, so PennDOT handles the inspections for the larger bridges, uh, they bill us a, a percentage of the cost, they cover a, a bulk of it. Smaller bridges or bridges that are not road bridges, like a pedestrian bridge, are the city's responsibility.
Yeah, okay.
And that's, again, something that we will, they, um, uh, have, we've not kept pace with inspection on the smaller bridges, uh, in this coming year, that's something that we, uh, now will, will undertake, so we can bring all of that to...
Do we have qualified inspectors, or do we have to hire that out?
This gentleman sitting next to me is a certified bridge inspector.
Well, twenty feet's not a very long bridge, so, you know, that qualifies for pretty much, I don't know any bridges myself that are under twenty feet, to tell you the truth.
A lot of parks bridges and things, like the Elbow Box Call Huts and things, um, most of it, you know, we will use consultants to help, because they're the experts and they have staffing, but we do have some limited in-house capability.
Sure, you can look underneath and see if it's rusting and stuff like that, right? I mean, so, I, you know, again, your department, uh, you know, I feel is professional, uh, responsive, and, you know, attentive to my needs, and so, so I, I thank you for that, and, um, the one last thing was, did you see the story where that neighborhood, and I can't remember if it was in Pennsylvania where it was, where they put in that backwards parallel parking that you wanted to do up in...
I did not, but, what was the, uh...
All are up in arms. Yeah, I think it is, it might be like, I wanna say like Newcastle or somewhere, you know, some little town like that.
It'll be okay, it'll be great, so boring.
I know, but it's an adjustment.
It's an adjustment.
Okay, no, that's it, thank you, appreciate it. I always back in, but not into, uh, paralelism.
So, I know, it's easy getting back.
I mean, not into, uh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, first I wanted to ask about, well, first let me start with the good stuff, um, and I told you before, uh, the people that worked over on Diana Street, uh, they, they do quality work, and, uh, they were very nice with the community. Um, now that I can actually feel it.
Personally, yes.
Personally, um, the, the guys have been very, very nice, hardworking, uh, thinking of the people that live there, so I really have to give this company credit, uh, and also, union, so, um, they, uh, are doing, I'll let you know how it goes, because there, there's a lot of work there.
Yeah.
Um, and they're, they're doing a great job.
This is List Street, yeah.
Yeah, um, but I wanted to, to say that, that's worked out, and I'm sure they'll be working all winter there, uh, uh, when they've done it down at, um, LA General Hospital, they're working on a cancer center down there, they've been, all last winter they were working too, so, I'm sure these guys will be working as much as they can through any kind of weather. But, um, and, uh, I have very good results out of working with your staff, uh, most of your staff, you know, Tommy's great, and, um, I keep wanting to call him Chris, your deputy.
Jeff.
Jeff.
Jeff is getting trained, or he'd be here, so, yeah.
And, and you're certified as a bridge checkerader?
Checkerader, that's right. Inspector, yeah.
So, after I heard about the Swindell Bridge, and, um, California Avenue, I guess you ran out there, and I see that there's going to be some attention taken to those.
We're gonna try to put a little bit of money into, into both of those bridges, um, to, to ensure that they remain safe.
Yeah, 'cause the concrete is falling down, and two seventy-nine is right below. The Swindell Bridge is the East Street or Charles Street, we have a number of different names for it, um, and it's very dangerous, but thank you for speedy delivery on that. And the California Street Bridge, I mean, when you could start seeing, you know, the street, or, uh, two seventy-nine through, you know it's time, and, um, uh, Larry Street's going to be finished, um, I guess this year.
Yes, during the construction season, yep.
Right, um, how about the city steps there on Pig Hill?
Well, the Rialto steps, is that?
Yeah.
We have, um, we have some funding for next year to do some work on that, um, it won't, it'll be, it'll be enough to address the major items.
It won't be a rebuild, it'll be a...
Won't be a complete rebuild.
It'll be a, a fix.
Well, it's, nobody's getting hurt going up and down, and they have a railing to hold on to, um, do you take care of the war memorials?
We do not, no.
Okay, so none of that is under you, but yet, um, you were talking about art, the arts are, to put arts in the park, or...
We have incorporated, um, public art into, and, and, and hope to do more of that, uh, incorporating public art into our right-of-way projects, so, so the projects that are in the right-of-way, so Broadway Avenue, uh, for example, is, is at the Art Commission today, getting approved, we hope, uh, for painted curb extensions, we did a, uh, supported Councilman Strausberger in a painted intersection, uh, we had the painted intersection, I think, in Carrick as well, so, uh, we do have art, uh, but in the right-of-way, it's not the war memorials.
Okay, it's not the war memorial, okay, well, that's, that's good, you don't take care of the war memorials, that's public works.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I'll leave out for public works. Okay, uh, bus stops, I, I know we have, we have had, um, that's Port Authority, that's the county.
So, it's a combination?
Okay, when you have a business district, like I have, and one person, they're like people standing where they live, and you have handicapped people that get on at that stop, I don't know if you've heard this or not yet, but it's go, been going on, um, they moved the bus stop down the street where there's a doctor there and a hairdresser, and you know, they get transportation in and out, and there's no parking except for a handicap, plus for, or it would push everybody else down the street, and it's, it's pretty nasty out there, so, um, that's all Perry's go out.
No, we're familiar with it, the, they, where we, um, uh, bus stops are, are not frequently moved, but when they are moved, it is to, um, address concerns regarding safety or operations.
Is it one concern, because out of it, we now have people that are handicapped?
It's a systemic concern, so it's, it's really not, you know, we don't move bus stops based on a, on a complaint system or, or something like that, it's, it is to provide for the operation in consultation with the, we, we make the determination, the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure makes the determination of, uh, final approval of a bus stop location, but obviously, we do that in very, very close consultation with the Port Authority, um...
It wasn't done with the community, and Port Authority didn't know anything about it, 'cause I, I was working with them, and, um, but it has hurt that part of the business district, and it has hurt handicapped that get on at that stop, and it seems like it's only pleased one person, so, if you just look at that, that'd be great, um, and I'll go out with you, uh, if you want, okay, and, uh, the driving pledge, have you gotten any back from?
We have.
The residents from outside the city of Pittsburgh?
Well, it's directed for the residents inside the city of Pittsburgh.
First you get the ones from outside, then start talking to the ones that live there.
Well, we do know that no one wants anyone to speed in their neighborhood, but they are sometimes the ones speeding in someone else's neighborhood, um, and so we've really targeted it to, um, to our own residents, um, we've, we've, we've pushed it out, as have our partners in the, in the county and the Port Authority, and so we do have, um, signatories from residents that are beyond the city limits, so, we have gotten actually, um, uh, quite a few, a couple hundred, um, participants in the program, and it really does make a difference, as, 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 you know, many of you know who have the traffic calming, um, measures in your neighborhoods, um, as we go out and measure speeds on these residential streets, um, nearly all of our community residential streets are posted at twenty-five miles an hour, and that's a maximum limit, it's not a suggestion, um...
I have traffic out, they take turns on where they're at.
We see, it is, you know, uh, fairly common that we see, you know, rates of ninety percent non-compliance with the maximum posted speed limit, where we have median speeds that are approaching forty miles an hour, uh, on twenty-five mile an hour streets, and many of those people that we observe are, uh, residents of the city, and so, you know, we don't need to, uh, install thousands of, of speed humps if we can encourage residents to travel the, the legal speed, because that is what's necessary to preserve the lives of our own neighbors.
I brought them up for the first time, and now we're getting them, but I don't have one in my district.
A speed hump?
Right.
Uh, well, I'm sure you will be for too long.
Well, I also, I also brought up first the capping over the highway, um, because that's what we wanted to do, to bring the north side back together, and, it's being used up the hill, so, quite a few things I brought up that weren't done, I know, voila, but I haven't seen it on the north side, um, okay, I, I know I asked for this once before, you do traffic studies, too?
Uh, not me personally, but our department does, yes.
How many traffic studies have we done for the bike lanes?
So, all of the, all of the bike lanes are the result of a traffic study that was done, so, uh, assessing what the impact will be...
For each one? Because when I asked for it, they said there were none done.
So, the, all of them have an assessment that's done on these streets to ensure that there's adequate space and capacity, that the need exists, and that the facilities that we install, um, are appropriate for the context of that street.
An actual traffic study on each street?
That, yes, that constitutes a traffic study.
Okay, I'd like to see those by the date they were done, because, I mean, there's been sixty-six, um, bike crashes this year so far.
That's true, and...
And some of them just go, and then they just stop.
But they, uh, the danger to people on bicycles if they're not accommodated is, is even greater, um, and so, we, we, um, yes, so we will continue to expand the opportunity to bicycle.
Me and my husband, we give a thumbs up when they actually stop at a stop sign or a red light, but they're far in between, so that's why I need piles of those papers to give out, and I blow the Hornet cars, too.
Excuse me?
I blow the Hornet cars, too, that aren't doing too well. Um, let me ask you about the CDBG money, CDBG money is for CDBG areas, but what is first to happen is that a CDBG area should be getting as much as everyone else's, and then you apply the CDBG dollars over that, is that being done?
Yes, it is, so this beginning, uh, uh, this year, twenty nineteen, um, there's no longer, uh, CDBG money being invested in the, in the street resurfacing program, for example, um, so the street...
No, bond money is.
Street, street resurfacing, uh, is, is, uh, coming from the same source of funding, so that we're sure that all of that is equitably distributed across the districts.
Yeah, I don't think it has, but, so, um... But bond money is being utilized for asphalting.
It is being utilized for street resurfacing because this is something that, you know, while, while ideally we would like to resurface our streets every ten years, that's routinely we have it, and in particular the low-volume streets that don't have transit vehicles on them and those, many of these streets, as many of your neighbors and constituents and residents will attest, can go forty years or more without resurfacing and so it is a long-term durable investment.
But there are streets that, well, they're asphalt last year and this year, you're already starting to see, you know, the second layer coming out from under it. Do we have somebody that's checking to see how much they're putting down?
Yes, we have inspectors on all of our crews and I, and we do go back. We have a two-year warranty on the paving of the streets and so if there's any of those instances when that's happening, then we do have the, we do have the paving contractors go back out and make the repairs. We are using a, we are no longer doing the just sort of surface treatments. All of the streets that we do are milled first and overlaid and so we have adopted a superior sort of street resurfacing approach than several years in the past was, was applied on the city streets. And so these streets are, they are lasting and we're seeing it even, as you recall, my first year here, we had more than a few potholes that, they do come back every year.
Do you know, cost me sixteen hundred dollars on my car from hitting the pothole.
But we definitely have seen fewer of them. So you can see the quality of the paving work that is being done because we are seeing, you know, dropping complaints.
If we had our own asphalt plant, even if they were portable and would buy those instead of allowing the contractors to actually figure out what you're being given every year for asphalting.
I know that's been a topic of discussion.
Yes. We can talk more about that later. But the thermoplastics, since you brought it up, that really bothers me because people have fallen on that and not behind our building, but the old jail, we still call it the old jail. I don't know, you know, I don't know the name.
Because it's the old jail.
It's the old jail, okay. From scraping and salting, the thermoplastic is pulling up and really, when you're using that, you're supposed to have your gutters where that can't go down into the gutter. There's a concern out there with the thermoplastic. I think there's some place in California that they actually stopped utilizing it because it, it can cause cancer. It's actually, I don't know if they've proven it out there or not. But no, when you work with that, it's dangerous stuff. I mean, they're supposed to have face masks on. They're supposed to not even have their own clothes showing. They're supposed to be fully clothed because they can be hurt and just breathing in
Well, it must be the adhesive then.
This powder.
It's not the actual tape.
Right.
No, it comes in like a powder form.
It's, it's, we've provided all of our workers with the protective gear. Yeah, there is, there is protective gear, just as with many of the other.
Are they wearing, I mean, the face masks?
And obliged to wear that, yes, we have, we have bought it and that is an expectation of the foreman that they will make sure that their, their crews are safe. We've provided all of the appropriate equipment to make sure that that happens and we do care for the safety of our workers.
And especially breathing.
They have, they have all the equipment, right?
Later on, they could get cancer and that could be the cause of it. So we have slips and falls. We have it going into our gutters. I mean, it's great, great for Florida, but places like we are, I'm not quite as sure if it's lasting as long. Now, I know the paint that we were using was probably the cheapest paint. You could tell, like my relatives all lived, worked in those areas years ago, but the paint that they can use, probably it would cost about a hundred, a hundred and twenty dollars to do the same length as what we're paying, like maybe fifteen hundred in thermoplast.
So the thermoplastic can last about seven years. Waterborne paint needs to be.
With soled streets and scraped up?
Yes, it can, the thermoplastic properly applied.
It's got to come to my district.
Is durable to about seven years. The waterborne paint needs to be repainted every year.
That's because it's cheap.
We need to repaint it every year. We do do material testing, yeah.
Okay, because the kind that was used before and it was a good, you didn't have to go doing, I mean, as soon as you put those lines on there, it's like whitewash. You know, it comes right off. Because I think it was how cheap the paint was that they used. That can be for another day too, but I just wanted to bring it up because, I mean, I almost fell on it and I don't know, it seems like it's gone over here now. Like, because I would show people the examples of it. And to go down the drain and send into our water system is not a good thing.
Yeah, it can't be used on concrete, so we use epoxy on concrete.
Well.
Part of your issue is it's not, it's not thermoplastic.
Is that asphalt or what is that back there?
I don't know the street. You're talking about Broadway is concrete, which is.
No, right, right behind our building. Is that, that's asphalt.
Oh, Ross, Ross is concrete.
No, yeah, Ross.
It's concrete.
Right. That's where I tell our people to go for an example, but, okay, I think I asked you, but, oh, just one last thing and I know it don't have to do with the budget, but that poor lady that hasn't been able to park in her garage and the guys at asphalt at the street wanted to scrape that so that she'd be able to get her car in her garage. Do you think before we get a lawsuit against us that something can be done over there?
We've looked at that a few times. We've made various adjustments to it. So my understanding was she's now able to get down there.
I, were they out again?
Yeah, they've been out, yeah, we came out this year again also.
Then I want to thank you.
Oh, well, you're welcome.
Because I didn't get a call and say, hey, they were out there and they fixed that, so. I thought I would with that one, but thank you again for that, but it's.
You can confirm it.
I know, I could call some people anytime of the day or they're out of town or they're with their family, you'll call me back, so I really appreciate that. I don't have your cell phone number.
I thought we'll get it too.
Do I?
Apologies for the dogs in the background.
But, but I have most of them and, you know, I, I have to say that anytime I've brought a concern to you or you or your deputy or Tommy or anyone that I've dealt with one-on-one, they've been great to work with.
Thank you.
And this is a very sticky, hard, but it's a woman doing it.
With, with a strong team behind her, so I appreciate that.
But did I mention the Davis Avenue Bridge though?
You have, yeah.
I, I talked to you about that.
And we've submitted a Penda multimodal, yeah, we've talked about that and we have a grant in to, to try and bring that back as a connection.
Okay, because for the safety vehicles is what I'm concerned about the most, is getting across. And the other neighborhood don't care for all the traffic either, but that's why we have humps.
Councilwoman, the.
Thank you so much.
I think Councilman Cockel has one more thing?
Two quick questions.
Sure.
Your e-bike, is it e-bike?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to ride it?
Is that electric slash pedal?
It is, it is an electric pedal assist, so if I stop pedaling, the bike stops moving.
Okay, so you have to pedal, but you have assistance from the motor?
I have assistance, so I feel like a superhero when I go up the hill.
No wonder you look so strong on that thing. I didn't know you were cheating, yeah.
No, 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 it just, it's, it doesn't chip the hill. It's not that powerful.
Can you ride that through the Liberty Tunnels?
I would not, but I suppose, I, you know.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, that's what I'm asking. I mean, because that would be a mode of transportation for people from my district, but.
It would be and that's one of the things that, you know, we, we hope that we'll be able to introduce as part of the public bike share system, so Healthy Ride is looking also at, at expanding their. So it, they, they are just a little bit more juice than a regular bicycle, but they, they do not.
So you can't do the speed limit. You can't do thirty mile an hour.
No.
You can do fifteen mile an hour.
I could probably do fifteen mile an hour, yeah.
So you wouldn't be permitted to go across the Liberty Bridge and through the Liberty Tunnels?
I'm sorry, no, I would, I would not go through the Liberty. I would not.
You could be pulled over and cited, I'm sure.
I, yes, probably, but I wouldn't, wouldn't do it nor would I advise others to do it either.
That's right, that's right, because then you have fifty-one on the other side and it could really get scary. And the other thing was Star Camp in Brookline. I spoke to Amanda and one of the reasons that.
Star Camp?
Star Camp is a street, sorry. One of the reasons why I feel like I don't need to talk to you on a regular basis, because you do have a great staff. Jeff, Amanda, Eric, you know, so anytime, they usually settle with before it even comes to you. And I spoke to Amanda about this, so I don't want her thinking I'm displeased and not getting results. She said she would look into it. I felt while we're putting speed bumps in, and this is going to be terrible for. Bumps?
No.
No, it's true. It is speed humps, not bumps. There is a difference.
You're very legal.
Senior centers, speed humps, what's, you know.
No, humps are legal, bumps are correct.
Correct.
Okay, so they're actually a different, it's not just a different name, it's a different.
It's, yeah, they have a longer, they have a longer arc on the speed humps.
So, and, and I would hate, this, this weighs on me, okay? And it's not my responsibility nor is it yours, I think, but they had a traffic study done there. But I have a woman and other neighbors who called me. They have a bunch of kids there, young, little kids, you know. Flying out in the street all the time. She's requesting speed humps. She said, I'll get the signatures from the neighbors. Apparently we did a traffic study there, I think, a year ago and it didn't result in thinking, oh, we need to do this. But every time I think, oh, gosh, if one of those kids, you know, something happens to one of those kids, I'm going to feel responsible unless I keep on you and then that's your, then you get a little.
Fair enough.
But, but I am, you know, I'm trying to fight for her, if we can do another study, if that's required, I don't know, but.
Well, then, speed humps are.
I think just one is all we would need, you know?
Speed humps are not the only tool, so we can, we can go back again and see, but, you know, it's, it's, obviously we want to be very data-driven, but the experience of our city is just as important. And so we can, we can look again and see if there's other tools. It might not be that a speed hump is the right thing, but there might be some other tools that we can.
Yeah, and they're open for anything. They're not hell-bent on, give us a speed hump. You know, they're, whatever, whatever we can do to assist that flashing light, you know, so that was it.
Okay, thank you.
Therefore, if there's nothing else from other council members, I'm going to relinquish these good people from the administration and bring this session to a close. Again, I'm Deborah Gross. I had to step in for Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith, who was called away. And I want to remind council members that this was our first of our few weeks of budget hearings, so we're going to be recessing. And for the public, we will be reconvening the budget hearings tomorrow morning, Thursday, November twenty-second at ten AM with the Department of Public Safety. And then also tomorrow, following that, at one-thirty, I will be chairing the budget hearing on the Department of Permits, Licenses and Inspections. Oh, I'm losing my voice. It's been a long day. I think I said that was at one-thirty tomorrow. So with that, I just need a motion to recess.
So moved.
Thank you. We are recessed.